Good evening. I'd like to call the June 11, 2019, meeting of the Carter County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everyone for attending. We've got quite the packed house. Almost had to park across the street. I imagine everybody else has some trouble parking too. I know we have a lot of people who are wanting to speak today. So, we're going to get you all in here. So, whatever we can do, hear what you guys have to say. So, first off, though, I'd like to go ahead and ask Ms. Melissa Ayers to lead the pledge and give our indication.
All right. What? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's on your next? Dear God, as we begin tonight, we ask that you would guide our thoughts, interactions, so that we successfully serve the students, parents, and community who have put their trust in us. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Is there a minute? Board members, you've had time to review the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion regarding the meeting agenda? Anybody move to approve the meeting agenda as presented?
I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you, Brittany. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Second by Mr. Jake Godwin. And have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passes, Board 6-0. And now, we're gonna move to the public comment portion of our meeting. So, here we go. Here's some rules, okay? We have, ooh, how many? Twenty-three speakers signed up for today. And it's gonna work like this. Based on Board of Education policy 23-10, speakers are at the limit, three minutes per person. Each speaker should state his or her name at the beginning. Speakers should not make obscene remarks or issue personal attacks or insults. Speakers shall not discuss any information obtained from personnel files or student records or air any complaint against an employee or student. Board members will not respond to individuals except to request clarification. Okay? At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call Speaker Gavin Dean. And if you will, in addition to your name, and also, if you could tell me if you're currently a student at Mass, or maybe you're getting ready, you're already approved into Mass, also tell us what school year you're attending in eighth grade, if you are attending, or if you're home schooled.
All right. My name is Gavin Dean. I am currently attending the Mass Early College High School. I'm going into my sophomore year. This college, this early college program has offered a lot of opportunities for a lot of different kids. It has opened up so many different things and allowed a lot of friendships to happen that wouldn't have otherwise happened across high schools. Personally, I'm going for a robotics and engineering degree. I plan on transferring out of this school with 60 credits, which is the equivalent to an associate's degree. I plan on transferring into NC State and then going to MIT from there. This would set me two years ahead. And for a lot of other kids, they don't plan the same thing. They plan on getting their associates or getting their certificates in order to go into the workforce here, which we need more of a labor workforce here, in my opinion. This would definitely help out the community and the financial stability of the county. I know all the kids that have attended have enjoyed it heavily. And it's not a selective thing. It's a complete random lottery of who gets in and who doesn't. And I don't understand why you guys would stop funding it after you guys have already started. Remember why you guys started funding it in the first place? I feel like you guys should keep funding it all the way through, until it causes real problems for the county or state, funding-wise. Like, for instance, say, something went wrong and we really needed funding for it. So, like, the roads, like, all the roads got destroyed or something, some freak accident were to happen. And then you guys could pull funding from it. But right now, I don't feel like it's a big problem. So, I would like you guys to please take that into consideration when thinking about the funding for the program.
Thank you very much, Gavin. By the way, Mr. Kenny Peterson over here is our timekeeper, so he will make sure you keep on task. And Kenny, what are you gonna do? Flash up a...
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Okay. All right? And then...
That's the time.
All right? Great. Okay, next, Charles Elliott.
Yeah, you'll have to bear with me a little bit. I got a tickle, and I might have to speak fast, because there's just so many important points that I want to be able to share. I'm Charles Elliott. I teach, I currently teach engineering at Moreton City Middle School right now, and I also work with Blue Water, selling real estate. My daughter also is a student at Mass right now. She'll be a sophomore this next year. And I would have to say that, and she would tell you, that this has been the best year of her educational career so far. She has really come into her own. She's excelled academically. I'm not gonna hit you with numbers, because I think Ms. Rosen is gonna share some of those statistics with you later on. So, as you all know, as everybody in this room knows, Carter County is a fantastic place to live. That's why we're all here. One of the things that make this area what it is, is, and that makes it so great, is the commitment that we've had as a county to education. Carter County is well-known in our region for both our consistent results in education and our innovative mindset. That commitment to excellence and to the consistency that we get in the education and in our education programs, and to that innovation, is obvious through initiatives like Mass Early College High School. And of course, you know, like we do in Carter County, when we do something, we do it right. Okay? The school system and Craven, Carter Community College, sorry, has made a commitment to the Mass Early College High School. We've made a commitment in time, man-hours, you know, professional career choices, and, you know, where it really counts, money. So, like I said, Principal Rosen is gonna share some statistics with you about how successful the program's gonna be. I don't have those numbers memorized, but it's been fantastic. I know my daughter's done really well. She's done really well in things that aren't her strong points. So, that's definitely a plus. I noticed that on the agenda tonight, one of the items was globally competitive students. And I think one of the buzzwords recently has been that not all students are, or should be, or want to be, on the college track, okay? So, we need to be tech-ready, career-ready. Mass Early College High School is poised to set up students for the programs that they have and the association with the community college, really poised and set up for the students to be successful in all of those areas outside of just, you know, college prep. What I would like to see, and from what I understand, is that the choices about the funding and the supporting of the school isn't necessarily at this level, that is, at the General Assembly level. What I would like to see at the July meeting is some sort of plan from the Carter County Board of Education as to how y'all are going to pursue or advocate for the school at the General Assembly to secure the funding for continued, for Mass to go forward. Thank you.
My name is Janice Foltzer. My grandson attends Mass Early College. He has struggled in prior years. This year at Mass, he has excelled. He has achieved a 3.6 grade average. He is taking welding. His vision is to become a welder and an underwater welder. And he welds with these adult men in that class, and he has averaged a 95 grade average. His goal, his vision, is once he gets out of Mass, that he will have associate's degree or certification and be ready to go to work. We come from a family where, you know, down east, you used to could get a job at a fish house. That's no more. That's gone. And now, we have to travel so far. But with Mass, he's getting his high school education and plus his college, his education for the welding program. And I'm hoping that he'll pick another program, so he just don't have one. So, I would appreciate y'all just consider to be an advocate to the General Assembly for this Mass program, because it is so much needed. And he has excelled so much, I cannot begin to tell you. He's a changed young man. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Foltzer, where does your grandson go, eighth grade?
Excuse me?
Where did your grandson come?
He went to Smyrna.
Smyrna? Okay. All right. Just taking lots of notes here. Gavin, where'd you go to school, middle school?
Smyrna as well.
Smyrna? Great. Okay. Let's have Deanne Rosen.
So, I'm Deanne Rosen, Principal of Mass Early College High School. We had a wonderful first year. I appreciate the two Board of Education members that visited our school to learn more about the early college model and talk with our students. I continue to open the invitation to the rest of our board. Early colleges began in North Carolina back in 2004. In 2017, 2018, Early College High Schools served over 25,000 high school students in our state. The model continues to grow. Early colleges are focused on first-generation college students like me that offers a career certification, an associate's degree, or two years of transferable college credit to any of the 16 universities in the North Carolina system. Our first cohort has 90% first-generation college students. Our upcoming cohort, the class of 2023, has 91% of first-generation college students. Our students rose to the early college opportunity and performed very well. Of students enrolled in each course, we had 98% earned credits in English I and English II, 93 in Math I, and 100% of our students earned a credit in Math II. We have a wonderful partnership with Carter Community College. We had over 500 college credit hours for our first year. The majority of our college courses, Mass students stay in their cohort, which means it's just Mass kids in those college classes, and the instructors teach just the Mass kids. Students that took classes such as sociology or psychology had parent permission as their parents felt they might be mature enough and proved correct to handle the topics. Benefits of early colleges are they're more likely to graduate from high school, they're more likely to earn credentials, lower levels of district expenditures after year three, increased lifetime benefits of society of $92 million, and estimate benefits of increased tax payments, reduced participation in public assistance, and reduced incarceration costs. This was based on a 12-year study funded by the U.S. Department of Education and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. I support all public schools in our county, and I hope that I work for a board that feels the same way. Mass is our newest high school in the county, one of four great places, one of four great high schools for students to learn. Our district has always been innovative and has led North Carolina in public education. However, education isn't a cookie-cutter approach anymore. No matter if you're in education or own a business, you meet the needs of your audience. We would be doing a disservice to the students of Mass if our school does not continue. Like I said, I'm a first-generation college student. I'm passionate about this model. I appreciate the two board members that have visited us. I urge the rest of our Board of Education to stop by and see the great things happening. My mother always told me to never judge a book by its cover. The doors of Mass are open and ready to serve. We are a Mass-speaking family, and we encourage our Board of Education to join us. Thank you.
Porter Quinn.
My name's Porter Quinn. I'm an upcoming sophomore at Mass Early College. I just wanna start off and say that I've never been a really, like, big school person. I've always been, like, kind of the slacker, you know? But I got to Mass this year, and it was like an eye-opener for me, like, how important school is to you and how there's so many things in front of you that you can take by the hand and really, like, excel with. And I've kinda, like, put down my feet this year and, like, excelled myself. I think of Mass as like a book, and us students as like the pages in the book. And we're writing our own pages, and all together, when we graduate, we're closing that book and becoming the novel of tomorrow, the adults of tomorrow, our leaders, our presidents, our board members. Us kids, we go in these different departments of education, and we're kind of dipping our feet in them. But then, we kinda fall into the water and really start just going deeper and deeper in what we wanna do in life. And that's what Mass is. It's our body of water, even though we're right on the water. Our school entirely is a body of water, and we're swimming in it, and we're going deeper and deeper. And I don't think we're gonna come up, because every kid in this school, I've seen them, they just, when they're in the classroom, they just, there's no talking, there's just, it's like we're kinda just zoned in on what we're doing. And I've never been in a school environment like that. And that's what I see in Mass. I see every kid working to their potential and working at what they wanna be in life. And I know when I grow up, that I'm gonna remember, I went to a school where everybody there wanted to succeed. And that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Porter, where'd you go to school?
I went to Dupont.
You went to Dupont? Okay. All right. How about Clark Johnson?
My name is Dr. Clark Johnson, and I'm here to give you a parent's perspective of the Mass Early College High School and to ask that you continue your support of this valuable program. As you're aware, we have just completed our first year at Mass. By most accounts, of parents that I've spoken to, it was a great success. The students enrolled there have gone out on a limb to try something new in Carteret County. Despite significant setbacks that occurred this year, including the devastation of Hurricane Florence and the tragic death of a beloved classmate, the students have risen to the challenge of combining high school-level and college-level coursework. There are well over 100 early college high schools throughout North Carolina. The Wilmington area has five, and with the exception of Pamlico and Jones County, all of the counties in southeastern North Carolina have at least one early college high school. Our program offers the opportunity to complete college-level coursework in fields of study that are geared towards benefiting our local industries. With time, Mass promises to create a highly skilled workforce for local jobs that will help support our maritime-focused economy, as well as create jobs to keep our kids in Carteret County. Statewide, this model often benefits first-generation college students and also creates an alternative for students who may not succeed in a regular high school. The program offers small class sizes with great student-faculty interaction and individualized courses of study. Our diverse student body has grown closely together this year despite their different backgrounds. Our students love their faculty, and it is apparent that the outstanding faculty love our kids. Statewide data from 2015-16, which is the most recent available online, indicates that these type of schools have served the students well. 95% of the early college programs in the state have outperformed traditional schools in respect to graduation rates. Mrs. Rosen spoke of the outstanding achievements this year, so I'm gonna pass over that. But just, you know, in summary, over 500 college credit courses, course hours were earned this year by these kids. These are outstanding results. And these results, you know, such as these, offer great proof that the promise of Mass is working, and shouldn't we celebrate their success? Please don't take a step backwards and remove your support of this valuable program. I've heard concerns that Mass takes away funding, that teachers, you know, takes away funding and teachers from our other three schools. I can see that may be true. You, as a board, have more knowledge on the budget than I do, but at least three of our four faculty had previous positions with the school system, so it may be a matter of transferring funds from one to the other. But I did want to point out that, you know, Mass is reaching other students, our traditional high schools are not. In my case, my son was home schooled the last three years, and I know of at least two other students in his class were home schooled. So, it's reaching other kids that, you know, that were not in the school system before. Just please consider joining us in lobbying the North Carolina Legislature to continue funding the early college programs. Just ask that you would not, you know, yank the rug out from these kids who are trying something new. And thank you for your time and appreciate your investment.
My name is James Walker. I live at 1503 Bay Street, Boyd City, and I'm not in college. I'm gonna ask the board to think outside the box. I would not approach the General Assembly. I would approach the State Board of Education. The money follows the students. Six to $7,000 follow each student. Multiply seven by every student that you have at Seabass. That should be able to fund your school at Community College. State Board of Education, not the General Assembly. I think the money follows the ADM, that's what they call ADM, the money follows the student. You could have this student in a school across the street, the money follows the student. Now, I've heard somewhere down the line that they're upset about the number of students leaving East Carter. Okay. I've been telling board members since 1968 that eastern part of the county is getting smaller and smaller and smaller, while the western part of the county is getting larger and larger and larger. Has nothing to do but with water and sewer down east. Whether you keep the college open or close it, East Carter is gonna keep getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Think outside the box, Board of Education. Think outside the box. Thank you.
Janine, is it Faciola?
No.
All right. Did I mess it up?
It's okay.
Go ahead, tell me your last name.
Faciola.
Faciola, okay.
Did you want more people to come in while it's ready? I'm Janine Faciola. I live in Beaufort. My daughter goes to Mass, so without wasting your time, you obviously know I support the program. We've had a great year. Just like any parent of a high school student, there were days and moments where she was frustrated, and then there were, but the difference between her frustration at Mass and her frustration with school prior to this year was every day she woke up ready to go there. She felt supported, not that she didn't feel supported at Beaufort Middle, because we had an amazing support system there. But at Mass, in a smaller classroom setting, she felt when she was in a situation that she needed more time, more information. She felt comfortable, and her confidence grew in a way that she was able to go to her peers, her teachers, and her principal and ask for more help if she needed it. She's excelled. She's a good student. She's very disciplined. I have no complaints with that. But she needed a change. She asked me for a change. Had we not had Mass as an option, we may not have gone to East, because she was asking me for other options. I didn't want her to leave this county. I'm a, I went to public school. My mother taught public school. That has nothing to do with, I consider Mass a public school. It is offered to everyone as an option. But anyway, Mass as it is, is amazing for these students. But beyond that, as a business for our community, we are building up opportunities for these students, as they've said before, to stay in our community, to work in our community. Some students that may would have quit high school may finish, not only finish, but excel and move into trades that they may not have even known were an option for them without this opportunity. Not that it's not offered to our current high school students, because I know it is. But this situation catches some of the kids in a smaller setting and builds up their confidence in a level and an opportunity that some may not have had if they went to the bigger high schools. This opportunity for my daughter was the answer that she needed, that she wanted. And for me, as a parent, I've watched her grow as a student. I've watched her and her peers at this school grow as a team. And for me, the business end of it, again, is we have put in the money, time, training. The Community College has supported fixing the building up, and to just give up after a year would be a mistake as a business point. If these children's faces are not enough to prove that point, that it was a successful year and their hope for the future, then look at it from the point of view, as a business, we are taking away time, money, and effort that has already been put forth. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your service to our community. My name is Brian Recker. I'm a pastor at One Harbor Beaufort, just down the road, and I've been a foster parent for five years. Currently, the foster parent's a Carmen Carter. Smile, wave. So, I don't know much about the statistics or the finances, but I can represent one student's experience. So, Carmen, prior to coming to our home earlier this year, over the last year, had been in five different foster homes. So, she'd experienced quite a bit of displacement and trauma, I'd say, in moving around from place to place. The one stable thing in her life over the last year has been Mass, the early college program, where she has really excelled, not just from an academic perspective, but from a relational perspective. She considers that school to be family. I know that there was a lot of bonding that happened after some of the trauma that the school did experience, the loss of one of the students. I'm sure we can imagine what that would be like in such a small school, only 50 students, to go through that event together. And to see them band together in some of the relationships, not just with the students, but even amongst both the faculty and the staff as well, has been something very impressive for me to behold. I do have, I couldn't convince Carmen to share her own story, but I got her to share a quote. So, Carmen said, "That Mass has made a huge impact on my life, and I've been very successful there as a student for the first time, getting mostly As because of the support of the teachers and staff and the students. They've been like a family, and I'd be very sad if I wasn't able to go back to Mass." And I can vouch for this. Now, she wasn't in our life prior to this, but she said that it's new for her to be a straight-A student, however she is now for the first time ever. And she's begun to even think of herself differently. She thinks of herself as an excellent student. She's begun to think of herself as the kind of person that gets good grades for the first time. She has a 4.2 GPA, which is something that she's begun to now feel comfortable with really owning. So, it does seem to be an irresponsible waste for me to stop funding the school at this time, not just from the perspective of the fact that, man, the amount of money and passion and creative energy just to get a program like this off the ground in the first place seems to be massive, and to throw that away after one year seems to be irresponsible. But even more than that, to snatch this opportunity away from children that have already begun to plan their futures around this opportunity and to begin to set their hopes on what this opportunity can provide for them. And I know that that would devastate Carmen. You know, it would be another trauma and disruption to her, and I think that many of these children have probably already experienced more trauma and disruption than some of us might be aware of. And so, I think that's another thing to just keep in mind, that if those 50 students were disrupted in that way, that'd be a tough thing for all of them to have to deal with. I know for my student, that'd be a tough thing for us to deal with in our family. So, thank you for your consideration. Have a great night.
Thank you, Brian. Did Carmen go to school in Beaufort Middle?
Beaufort Middle.
Beaufort Middle? Great. Amanda Morrow.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Morrow, and my son Cameron will be a rising freshman at Mass. He was homeschooled for the past five years. Many thanks to our board for allowing some... Many thanks to our board for allowing some of us to make comments tonight with regards to the Mass program. We certainly appreciate your time, your service, and commitment to our county, and more importantly, to the children of our community. We wanted to share a little about our experience with Mass as parents and as local business owners. My husband and I could not be more in love with this place that we get to call home. Because of that, we have a vested interest in not just our school systems, but a desire to see our community continue to flourish. Our son Cameron will be entering Mass in the fall of 2019, but we began our research into this program well over a year ago. Every day, I'm learning something new about this amazing school. The skills, opportunities, licensures, certificates, certifications, degrees, and college credits are priceless to our small community and a great need of more trained workers. The wide range of needs that can be met by this unique school are quite astounding. Our family's educational experience includes public school and homeschooling. We have always respected and supported the public school as my personal education background is teaching. Through all our educational choices, we have been met with an incredible amount of support, respect, and grace. I can't thank our public schools enough. We currently have a rising junior at West Carteret, a rising first grader at Morehead Primary, and hopefully a rising freshman at Mass. As a board, I realize that you have to consider the needs and well-being of all students in our county. But I would like to personally share about our son Cameron, who loves this place we call home in all things water. Cameron is an entrepreneur that started his own lawn care business at age 12, is currently a second mate on a charter boat, and an extremely hard worker. He has been given many, many gifts, but academics are extremely tough for him. It was truly an answer to prayer when our family received the notification of his acceptance of Mass. Ms. Rosen, Mrs. Bernstein, Mrs. Skybal, Mrs. Dos, and Mr. Pittman have already made us feel like family. They have answered hundreds of my questions, met with me several times, and just have a heart for these kids. I know that no one is questioning that, but I would be remiss if I didn't pat them on the back for a job well done. At this point, Cameron is not planning to pursue a four-year degree, but that could change. Currently, his goal is to work in our community, contributing back to the economy of Carteret County in some type of trade or local industry. He will begin to work on these certifications and degrees right away with Mass, ensuring several things. He'll be job-ready. He'll be able to achieve realistic, obtainable goals. And he will be able to experience hands-on learning, all of which are so vital for children with learning disabilities. Now, I am very much aware that you can't make decisions about this program based on one student and one story. But I do think that Mass provides individual pathways and opportunities that our traditional high schools can't. And I know that Carteret County will be better because of it. I'm sure you will hear from other parents tonight, or already have, that feel that the Mass is meeting their needs in other ways, such as advanced courses and college credits. But tonight, I feel charged to share with you about the Camerons. Because as much as I would love to believe that no other student struggles in this way, this is simply not the case. So tonight, I will be the voice for the ones that need another way and for our county that needs another way. As I, I'm done with my time. If you are here for Mass, would you stand up, in support of Mass, would you please stand up? I just want y'all to get a visual.
Thank you, Amanda. Paul Pittman?
Hi, my name is Paul Pittman from Morehead City. I graduated from East Carteret 30 years ago. My son attended Morehead Middle School last year. And I've taken him to school probably for the, every day of his life, just about since he started school. But, and every day was a struggle. I don't want to go to school. Take me to work with you. He was a C student, never really grasped on. This year, after the third day, I saw a huge difference in this child. Every morning getting up, wanting to go to school early, wanting to be there to learn. He has come from a C student to an A student, loves school, has a focus on what he wants to do in life. He wants to be an engineer, and it's just made a huge difference. So I would just ask that y'all would consider funding this or agreeing with what we've got going on in the county and the state. I know there's been some money approved for it. We just need y'all to vote and get it done. Thank you.
Sean Dos?
My name is Sean Dos. I'm from Cedar Point. I am here to urge continued support for funding for Mass Early College High School and continue lobbying for support for Mass. I have recently seen where funding may be cut for all early college high schools across North Carolina. Excuse me. An underfunding education is short-sighted and short-changes our students and could jeopardize our county, if not our state. Mass Early College High School will begin its second year in 2019. The school has set the pace for a very successful future in Carteret County. With a variety of educational benefits provided for at the school, Carteret County will surely benefit. I have spent multiple hours at Mass and have seen how the students have grown over the last year. I have a son who attended Mass with the dream of one day owning his own marine propulsion repair business here in Carteret County. By attending Mass, he would be able to fulfill his dream. At age 14, he was accomplished many things, such as being an accomplished outdoorsman, an accomplished boatsman, and achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. He was truly on track until his sudden death in 2019, January. There may not be many 14- or 15-year-olds who know what they do, want to do with their life, but these students at Mass do. And they have direction and guidance that are being provided for on a daily, daily support system. Their direction and continued support by the opportunity given to attend the early college that has opened their eyes to a truly exceptional program. Many states have early college high school opportunities. These early college high schools have been proven to offer students the opportunity to attend college, many of which will never have such an opportunity. They have been given the opportunity to attend and to succeed. These students are succeeding not only in educational direction, but in trade skills and life overall. There have been multiple studies conducted over the early high schools, and the models have all demonstrated positive impact on actual achievement of the educational benefit. All the studies I have researched, and there's been, there's a lot of them out there online. There is very compelling evidence that early high school model improves academic achievement in both atmospheres, trade skills and furthering college education. As a Board of Education for Carteret County, I hope you continue to support Mass Early High School, as well as the other high schools in Carteret County, and urge, if not lobby hard, the county commissioners to continue their funding. I know I will. Let us not send education backwards in Carteret County by allowing the underfunding to threaten the future of Carteret County students. Thank you for your time.
Samuel Beasley?
Good evening. My name is Samuel Beasley and I'm a rising sophomore at Mass Early College. I'm pursuing a career in marine sciences and propulsion. And Mass Early College provides a plethora of opportunities that's for students to choose their own career path. And I don't understand why you even consider taking away funding after just one year of the school. This program makes your choice of work fun and enjoyable, plus there is an amazing atmosphere. This school has opportunities while, like a traditional public school, it's an adventure all in itself. And I think it's safe to say, through all that we've gone through, that Mass is a family. Everyone is, faculty, students, everyone. I don't want to lose that. It's been tough, but I wouldn't trade it for the world.
Andrea Beasley?
That's going to be hard to call. So that's Samuel, my son. I'm Andrea Beasley. I have twins, Isaac and Samuel Beasley, who are both at Mass. They were both homeschooled for their middle school, the three years in middle school. I'm here with other concerned parents and students because we've heard about the funding being at risk. But this has all been discovered via parent investigation and leveraging personal contacts. Because for some reason, from the county, from the Board of Education, we've heard nothing. Like, if we hadn't dug this up, we wouldn't know to be here to even say that, oh my goodness, somebody might be closing the doors to our school, like actually closing a school by not funding it. This innovative school is a great step for our community to help grow our skilled workforce and offer college opportunities to many students who otherwise wouldn't have the option. It's preparing students for focused trades, you know, so they can graduate high school and start a job day one. You know, without putting the money in to spend more. You know, a lot of people in our county don't have that disposable income, and this will save them. They will be able to start out at age 18 with a paying job. And there are plenty of businesses down east that need people that come, that will come in with skills to come and take that paid job. I understand some of the concerns about Mass pulling students from other county schools and impacting their overall numbers. I have to say, I'm curious as to why this is an issue with Mass, but I'm not hearing it about Tiller. That's pulling students from elementary schools. North Carolina's School of Math and Science, that's pulling students from high schools. But I don't hear anybody upset about that, whereas our school is 50 children total. So I'm not quite sure why we're coming under all the fire and why we're having to fight so hard to get buy-in and support. This model's been successful for other counties across the state of North Carolina. And I just don't see why we can't step out and do something different in our county. Like, why we can't step out and do something that everybody else is already doing. I ask that you consider the benefit Mass offers to our county. Please consider these students and teachers who have already completed a year and are so, they're ready. They want to finish. The plan is there. They've put the time and effort in. You know, I want you to take into account all the parents and the students who are enrolled for next year. Like, they're mentally there. They're ready to go. They're not thinking about a different school. This is going to disrupt a lot of people. I just ask that you would examine the issues you have with the program, like really think about what it is. And is it Mass that's the problem, or something else? And just know, like my son Samuel said, it's not just a school. And we're fully vested and we're going to fight to keep the doors open.
My name is Isaac Beasley. I'm also a rising sophomore at Mass Early College. My brother Samuel and I are enjoying this amazing opportunity at Mass. I personally am taking a politics class along with Mass and I'm thoroughly enjoying it. This along with many other students.
I'm sorry, what did you, you're having elementary?
I'm taking American politics. So thanks to Mass, I'm able to take this summer class along with many others, like Gavin Dean, who are taking history classes and other things supplied by the college. I personally enjoy the career pathway aspect. Ms. Rosen has instilled in us that, take one path, you don't like it, take another. It's there for you. Everybody at Mass is allowed for us to move from pathway to pathway and just choose a career that we enjoy. I personally want to stay in North Carolina. It's my home, especially eastern North Carolina. It's just, everything I've grown up learning is on the water. I'm taking a marine biology class and I want to come back, you know, support the community as a whole and just learn how to, you know, get a job in the place that I grew up. I've been able to learn so much outside of what is in traditional high schools. Don't get me wrong, the teachers here are amazing. Mr. Pittman, he teaches my favorite subject. Ms. Dos, yeah, I thought that there was a contest. She's an amazing teacher. There's nothing more you could ask of her. And the fact that these teachers willingly came to such a commitment as Mass, at Mass is insane. You know, switching from something that you're familiar with and coming to these students who are also taking the leap, as Mr. Baum said. You know, having the ability to nerve up and come to something nobody else has is amazing. I commend the rising freshmen for, you know, building the nerve. I myself found out the day of the deadline, filed it immediately. After coming from three years of homeschool, it's my environment. I mean, I love the small learning environment this provides. It's amazing. I don't know what else to add. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Isaac. Pierce Toledo?
Hello, my name is Pierce Toledo. I'm a rising sophomore at Mass Early College High School. As my other fellows and the parents have said, this has been an amazing school. This experience has been employed many other times, and all around, it has been successful. The reasons that I could see for this school being closed are very limited. And honestly, the emotional support that this school has provided through our small class sizes, very close personal relations with the teachers and with each other. I've seen, I take a bus to West Carteret. I've seen, like, you only see those groups and people that are either a very certain niche or something else, but will never branch out. But with us, we have managed to interlock altogether. That's why the loss of Alex Dos has hit everyone in our school so hard. And personally, for, if this school is shut down, I wouldn't know what to do. Because West is one of the last options I would want for myself due to the recorded amounts of drugs there. I've heard other students talk about Cro-Tan, high amounts of nicotine abuse. And to be honest, Mass doesn't have that. With Mass, we're all together. And in middle school, I was having psychological problems with myself, wanting to hurt myself. But when I've come to Mass, any time that I would even start thinking about it, I have friends that are right there saying, hey, we have your back. And I've also had friends that have had those sort of problems as well. And I'm right with them. I want to be there for them. And by the closing of Mass, I wouldn't be able to be there and help my friends the way I would like to. And through Mass, I've been able to discover a whole new career path that I incredibly enjoy. And I wouldn't know what to do if that was taken away from me. Thank you all for your time.
Savannah, let's see, Wirt? I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Savannah McGurk and I just graduated from Down East Middle. And I would be going into my freshman year at Carteret. And what Mass would do for me is help me become the person I've thrived to be. It would help me be an environment that would help me be a better person and discover myself and what I would want to be. It would help me achieve standards and goals I've set for myself. It would help my personality to develop. It would fit in with people that want to learn just as much as I do. I want to become someone that will help inspire people and matter. I want to be someone out there that would help somebody not be alone in the world. It's not just me being affected by this decision. It's everybody in this room and also people that couldn't make it tonight. It would help me and everybody that just... I don't know, just to... Just to keep this program going. I've never really wanted to go to high school and I've just, once I heard of this decision, I jumped up and I said, I want to be here. I, I want to be here. And my family has had issues. And my father passed away while I was really young. And it's just been me, my mother, and it's just... It just, we haven't had much help. And this would be such an amazing opportunity and it would help me. And it would just, so I would be able to go to college and have that opportunity and experience that I wouldn't have if I didn't have Mass. Thank you.
Julie Pittman?
Hi, my name's Julie Pittman. I was a teacher in this county for 31 years, EC teacher at Smalley Elementary School. I've seen a lot of programs come through the county in those years. I've seen a lot of them go because they didn't work. I've taught a lot of students that have struggled academically. And I worried about them going to the high school level, not because of the teachers at the high school level, but because of the programs and the classes and the academics that they would have. because of the programs and the classes and the academics that they would have to jump through those hoops to get out of high school. When the Occupational Diploma Program came to be, it went through many changes, back and forth over the years before it ever became what it is today. And that program has, we stuck with it, we fought for it because we knew that we needed it, and that we needed to be realistic and provide students with another way to receive a diploma than college-bound classes and algebra and those types of things. Because of that, we've produced a program that allows kids to get out of school and have a job-ready opportunity waiting for them when they come out of school. When I first heard about MAST, I was subbing at Smyrna. I was there for a long-term sub in the old position I retired from, so I was teaching middle schoolers like I've always taught. And I mimic Ms. Rosen to death, calling her about it, because I was so excited about this opportunity, because I taught many kids, many boys, many, a lot of boys, but many of them that were good with their hands and good mechanically and good with things that the high schools have gotten away from offering to kids. And they are our workforce. I mean, I taught for thirty-one years, but the plumbers and the electricians and the mechanics in this county, as I'm going through trying to get a house fixed from the hurricane, are making far more money than I ever made as a teacher with a master's degree. My nephew was an eighth grader, the year that y'all began discussing MAST and really talking about it, and we, this was, this was just, I was so excited. This was it for him. He and I talked in length about what he'd be missing, what he'd lose if he went somewhere besides East Carteret, the friends he wouldn't be around during that time when he was at East Carteret. And he made the conscious decision to apply for this school. He was excited about it. He's wanted to be a welder. Welding's what he wanted to do. And I talked to Zach Davis at East Carteret, and we had gone out there, and we had looked at his program and done all that type of stuff. But with the MAST program, he's already in, taken two classes with grown men in welding and has made, done better than many of them have done, according to his teachers. And his goal is to become a, he wants to do the underwater welding, and he's been talking about the nuclear welding, and these are, these are skills in this county that we do not have enough of right now in the direction that we're going with Jarrett's Bay and those types of things. And, I mean, we need this workforce that this can afford, that they come right out of high school. He liked, he don't like school. He didn't like school. But he was willing to, he liked that idea of that he could go to school, and he'd still have to meet the requirements of getting out of high school, graduating, his math, his English, his history, all those things. He had to do that. But he would be able to come out of high school and go right straight into the workforce and make a living and be productive in this county and stop the cycle of what was going on in his family with no further education and not being able to make a living past just providing the food you need that week or living with your parents for the rest of your life, those types of things, which we need desperately, and this program can provide. And I beg you, please, fund it, please. I'm sorry, I'm not paying attention.
See, Adriana, is it Cedar?
Hi, my name is Adriana Cedar. I'm a rising sophomore at MAST Early College, and I'd like to start by saying, MAST Early College is a fantastic opportunity, not only for me, but for any other students that end up coming to the early college or are already there. It's an opportunity that many kids don't get in places if they go to a regular high school, but this opportunity opens up doors for their future, and it gives them a realization of what they can be. And if, because without, I'd say without, if I didn't go to MAST Early College, I probably wouldn't realize my potential, because I'm a very independent student. I don't want help from anyone else. I would like to just work my way to the top or make good grades by myself. I don't want any help. But MAST offers that help, and I see it clearly, and I take it with open arms, because I don't feel like I've gotten this much support before with the staff, the teachers, the principal, and it's just a fantastic feeling, because I, there are no words. I mean, you just don't know what to say, because when... Well, I'm blank now. But you just have to think, you have to keep in mind that these are students' future lives, like, these are, like, my life and other people's lives and what they want to do. I want to go into interior design, and these classes that they're providing for me, I can get there quicker and more efficiently through these classes. And without them, I don't know if I would really know what path I'd want to go through. It'd take me much longer to figure it out. But currently, I have it figured out, because they've helped me navigate that path. And you just have to think, like, don't be the ones to shut down this program that has a potential to make a student a president or a secretary, secretary, I don't know. I mean, just a really good job, and just the best potential possible for anyone. And that's it.
Thank you, Adriana. And then we have Brian Shelton. Brian Shelton?
My name is Brian Shelton. I coach at East Carteret High School, also coach at Beaufort Middle. All right, my daughter goes to MAST, so we'll be starting MAST in August, I believe, and she wanted me to come up there and say something. I'm not going to speak on her behalf, because she can speak for herself, for herself. All right, I agree with the program, because she's highly intelligent, will be pushed, and all that good stuff. I speak for the students I talk to, looking at one of my people I coach right there. I have students right now that are talking about MAST as a stepping stone in life. You know how hard that is to have students actually start planning life lessons at sixth, seventh grade, talking about this is what they want to accomplish? Now, if y'all are going to high school next year, y'all gonna have a lot of seniors that have no plan of what to do, and that was our problem this year. A lot of people graduated without a plan. Do you want to go to college? I don't know. What are you gonna do? I don't know. You know what I mean? But we now have students at the middle school level talking about going to MAST, getting a degree. It's amazing to me. So, that is, that is my spiel about it. Like I said, my daughter will be joining. I'm speaking from a coach's point of view. I advise y'all to hit the schools, ask the students themselves, so y'all get boots on ground, I'm sorry, military, get boots on ground, so y'all can hear from their mouths that don't have a representative speaking for them. There's a lot of kids that's looking forward to doing MAST and getting where the offers from. I'm not a speaker, I'm a soldier, I'm sorry about that, y'all. All right, that's all I got to say. I'm out.
Stan Rule.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Stan Rule of Beaufort. I'm Dr. Rule of Morehead City. My career for, this is my forty-sixth year, taking care of young people, youth and teenagers. I work with school every day, and then I work trying to find ways to help kids reach their potential. I was, I was, and I still am so proud to be a citizen of this county because of what this board and this system has initiated with this program. And I can vouch for the fact that kids come in and tell me about their excitement applying and hoping to get in, tell me about their excitement after they've gotten in, how much this is a perfect match for them. So, when I knew you were having this meeting, I'd say I needed to come and say how important this is to the kids and the parents, but they've already said it. They said it better than I can. I will say a few things that they haven't said. In my work and in your work, when we're trying to have kids learn, the hardest thing, we can find out if they have a learning disability, help them with their focus, help them with tutoring, but if we don't have effort and motivation, we can't get things moving. And this system, this, I would call this a new community of learning that we have, has put a fire underneath some youngsters who had trouble with motivation and effort, but they were already smarter than me. They were smarter than, I don't know how smart you are, but they were as smart as you. But they weren't clicking, they didn't have the effort and the motivation, and so they had turned off and shut down. So, I've seen that over and over again in the system, and I see the passion in these young people that we want to instill in them and that is paying off. We also, also know that there's passion in the educators who are there delivering this education, and you've heard that tonight, too. The other piece to that is that we have a lot of really bright, wonderful people, articulate young people, that are just, you know, maybe they're making A's, but they're just sort of coasting to make an A's. But this system, this new community of learning, is giving them the potential to put out effort and multiply their payoff with their college credits, their excitement, heading for areas of learning that really fits their needs. And I just think it's, I agree with Mr. Walker, we need to think out of the box. We need to think about expanding, not decreasing this program. And I would speak and say two more things. You've heard how many young people are saying, "I wasn't interested, my kids weren't doing great, now they're doing great." And I hope you've noticed how many people were in homeschool and had rejected our system because it wasn't good enough for what they thought their kids' need was, and they've come into the system because of it. Thank you for letting me go.
I'm Chris Mundon.
Hello, my name's Chris Mundon. I just want to start out by kind of stating the obvious. If you just look at the kids who are sitting in here, not much less the parents, and how many times do you have a meeting about high school, that you've got this many kids sitting in here at a board meeting that are this passionate, that are willing to step up here and share not only their hopes and dreams, but their emotions, which is rare? And the opportunity that we have here is, I, personally, I can't fathom where we would reject this program. It is an excellent program. You know, my son is Micah Mundon. He's a rising sophomore. He's already completed two college classes. He also took a night class. This summer, he's taking a history class and working, and he started this at fourteen and he is now fifteen. And he took a psychology class at fifteen years old, a college psychology class. At fifteen, I was watching Gilligan's Island after high school, I mean, after school, seriously. I mean, I was not focused. I had the learning aptability, you know, to be able to do it, but I wasn't interested in high school. And I wanted to learn, and I'm gonna wait and say this, I dropped out of high school, okay? Because I needed a different kind of learning, I needed a teacher that to, I felt like I was in a cookie cutter. And if I didn't have the right kind of learning, I didn't do well. And so, I got frustrated, and I ended up dropping out of high school. I've later on completed, went into engineering and army and all that, and did fine, but had it not been, if we'd had this kind of a program when I was younger, that was developed to specifically focus a kid on where he wants to go in life and what he wants to do, I don't know that that's the path I would have taken, okay? And I can say this, because I know there's many other students who are just like what I was, that are struggling right now in the, in the high schools, because their focus is different, their focus is not, you know, on a career, their focus isn't on going to college. They're caught up in the high school drama. And listen, thank God for our high schools. Thank God for, you know, the teachers. But this school has been excellent, you know, for my son. He's a learner. He wants to learn, he's passionate about school, he wants to become a psychologist. I don't know if that'll change. I hope it doesn't, so he can support me in my older age. But, you know, I'm just, look at the kids here, and look at the passion they have, the passion of the faculty, the teachers. I mean, this program had so many obstacles that it could have taken it down, but it didn't. It has excelled, and it has done well. And you, as board members, you came on the education board because I know you were passionate about education, okay? I know the funding is there. I know the funding is there in the Senate. I know that it's for three years, if I'm correct. So, I think there's a, from what I understand, there's a kind of a stump in, in the board. I would plead with you to please, as voted board members, to look at the people that you represent. That's us. And please, and look at the kids and their passion, and look at their hearts and the drive they have, and please, push this through, and like Dr. Rule said, we should be, we should be trying to triple this thing. We should be trying to make more of these high schools, and just think about where it's going to take us as a nation and as North Carolina. I mean, where we rank, and I'll quit, but where we rank in, in the world as America and our learning, isn't so hot. It's not. And this could take us a whole nother level than we need to be. And anyway, so, thank you for your time, thank you guys for what you do.
Melody Darden?
My name is Melody Darden, and I am speaking to you as a current Carteret Community College trustee and also a former high school public English teacher. I was at West Carteret. I began at West Carteret in nineteen eighty-one. So, I want to talk to you tonight about two matters, and the first thing that I wanted to address is, I'm asking you to reappoint Bill Henderson as Carteret Community College trustee. Bill is the longest-serving member on our board, and his leadership is thoughtful, it's action-oriented, and most importantly, it is always guided by this question, what is the best course of action for students in this community? By all metrics, his qualifications, his personal characteristics, the hours that he has spent with Carteret Community College, the years of service, his knowledge of college history, his adaptability to change, his visionary leadership, he excels. The college is better because of his service, and his absence on the board would be a real loss. And second, I had the opportunity to hear student, MAST early college students, talk to us at the last Board of Trustees meeting, and I was blown away. So, I would really like for you guys to come and take a look at what is going on at MAST, because I feel like there's some misinformation, maybe, you know, some disinformation, but the program is so solid. Students have done a better job than I can do telling you about the school, but you probably the school, but you've heard the advantages, you've heard the small class sizes, you've heard their opportunities for extra help, you've talked about, they've talked about the availability of courses that give them college credit, they've talked about their sense of belonging. And as Board of Education members, you guys know what the word differentiation means. I'm sure you have dropped it in conversation many times, and when you evaluate teachers, you want us to show that we can differentiate instruction, it is a very important part of the school system. And so, as a teacher, I know that one size does not fit all, and this high school gives some students opportunities to grow in ways that the traditional high school just can't. We also can't ignore the fact that student loan debt is at its highest ever, and to give some of these students an opportunity to get a heads-up on the financial cost, that would be great. So I'm begging you to promote the school and to lobby for continued financial support. And I also want to mention two other educational buzzwords, cooperation, partnerships, I feel like you guys use those and you think that those are valuable words, and so the idea of community, of cooperation and partnership, they always yield better products than competition or insistence on a single model of learning. So thank you, and I think I'm, I think I'm the last one.
Thank you, Ms. Darden. I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but making any type of decision on Mass tonight is not on our agenda. We are still waiting, we're still waiting to hear some information about budgets and state, and as far as controlling funding, you know, there's a big, big component here which is where the funding is going to eventually land in the House, and that we have, anyway, there's a lot of the questions still out there. We are not making a decision tonight, we will try to keep everybody posted and in the loop as, as much as possible, and, and we'll, we'll be back in touch on it. So at this point, we're done with the public comments, and we're gonna move on to the rest of our agenda.
I, I would like to just commend you young adults for being brave enough to come in here and fighting for what you believe in, you know, just keep doing that your whole life, and I'm proud of y'all.
Thank you all for speaking and expressing your, your desires.
I have to agree with Clark, I received an email from a student, and I, I didn't get a chance today, and I did not get a chance to respond, but to be your age and to write a board member is, is to be commended, because at your age, I probably never would've done that, and, and like Clark said, you know, good, good on you for standing up for what you believe in, I appreciate that.
Any other comments? All right, so the consent agenda has the following items for your consideration. This is the boring part, sorry.
Y'all can still stay if you want.
You did a good job.
What's going on?
You wanna shake your hands, go that way, go that way and shake your hands.
Oh, I'm proud of your speech, man, that was incredible. That's what called them in life. I know you do about speaking, you know, you did a good job.
Thank you. Got that all you gave us?
Shake your hands, yeah, shake your hands. Good job, good job.
Kitty, you come over, you come in the audience now.
Good job.
I'm good with the voice, before we can roll.
Hey, we're gonna, hey, Patty, can you take a quick bathroom break?
Okay, but then Jenny's folks are ready to roll.
Okay, all right, so.
You need to do a re-
That's what I did, I know.
A five-minute recess.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess real quick here just so we can let y'all fall out and get organized and all that.
Okay, good job, bud.
I felt like the hill in the room.
So they ignored you?
Well, I just do, I'll do Matt and Bart, and I said, "That's up to Travis," if you want to call him out.
Well, we got the student group, so it could be another time.
Do you want to email?
Um, well, actually, I mean, I'll be out there, I'm just gonna edit some stuff, so I'll be here. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Mundon's saying her students how much she appreciates their patience, some of the parents are a little annoyed, so just tell them how much they're looking forward to this, et cetera, et cetera.
I have a document for you to look at and sign, but we need a note, so I don't know whether you want to just come by, an officer, I'll give it to you, you can drop it off. The bus depot had an environmental spill decades ago, and there was some cleanup, and it's gotten to the point where NC Dean has said it can't be cleaned up anymore, but you need to record a notice of residual pollution, which puts the world on record, so we need you to sign that.
Yeah, drop it off, I can drop it off to you if you want.
Okay, I'll give it to you before we leave.
Right, so, just, can you do it? Okay, the consent agenda has the following items for your consideration. We have the approval of Board of Education minutes of May seventh, we have the, we are to consider personnel matters, consider student transfers, the consideration of the sale of two county vehicles, consider fundraiser requests, consider West Carter High School painting bid, and consider an additional student fee. Is there a motion regarding our consent agenda? Anybody move to approve the meeting agenda as presented?
Some may.
Okay?
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and all in favor of approving it as is, okay? All opposed, all right, motion passes six oh. The next item on our agenda is receive student presentations, litter prevention in the oceans and waste in landfills. And thank y'all very, very, very much for your patience, I know this was very long, so you guys are awesome for waiting and, and being as patient as you guys are. So, thank you, and at this time, I'll go ahead and let y'all go to town.
We'd like to thank the board for allowing us this time tonight to share our project on marine debris, limiting what we are contributing to landfills, and our partnership with Duke University Marine Lab. My name is Jason Van Zant, I'm the steam instructor at Bogstown Elementary School, I'm also the ITF. Our project is funded through the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association, NOAA granted us nearly three thousand dollars, and we use that money to start a composting program, pardon me. We purchase compost pails for piloting classrooms, an outdoor compost bin, recycle and trash receptacles for a playground, and we have in the works an eight-foot acrylic display case being built that's gonna go into the foyer of our school, or possibly in the front of the entrance. Our students will collect debris from campus, clean it, weigh it, and then deposit it into the display case, it will serve as an awareness piece for visitors coming to Bogstown. We currently submitted our second wave proposal, and if we're awarded, we'll stand to receive another three thousand dollars, we'll take those funds to purchase an outdoor water refilling station, encouraging our students to reuse those one-time plastic bottles instead of discarding them. We're also encouraging those that, in the community, that use our playgrounds such as lacrosse or other sporting events to take advantage of that feature, and to then discard their contents in the receptacles provided before leaving the campus grounds. We are considered by NOAA to be an ocean guardian school, meaning that we're taking steps to keep our campus clean and preventing any debris going into our waterways, and just sharing that awareness with others about this competing issue. Before us tonight, we have some of the finest fourth and fifth grade students and most patient representing Bogstown Elementary School. We have a collection of students from Mrs. Bass's fourth grade class and Mrs. Cowser's fifth grade class. These two classrooms partnered with Dumont this year and learned about marine debris, how it's harming the animals in the ocean as well as the food chain. We have students from Mrs. Sutton's fourth grade class, if you guys could wave, one, two, and these two individuals spearheaded the composting program in their classroom, and they're most responsible for the data that we have here, and don't worry, it's in the presentation as well. And then we also have a collection of fifth grade students representing our horticulture and marine science clubs, if you guys could wave. These individuals partnered with individuals from Sea Grant, Sea Mast, the North Carolina Coastal Federation, focusing on marine debris. We worked in our school rain garden, keeping upkeep, and learning how the pollutants from stormwater runoff go into our rain garden and is used as a natural filtration system. We've explored with the animals in our touch tank and gone out to the sound, studying the dirotis feeders, learning how these animals keep our estuary clean, and also how valuable they are to the marine fisheries. And just a moment, I'm gonna turn it over to these individuals and let them share their, why they feel that this project merits environmental importance as well as possible financial towards our school and the county, but more importantly, how it relates to the human health. So, before, I guess, or after they're finished speaking, we could take questions or comments from the board if, if time permits. We could have our first individual come up to the stand, please.
I have seen your classroom, and it is phenomenal, and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about your, your class.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosaria, and I was a fifth grade student at Bogstown Elementary School. The Du, well, the Dumont Project goal was to pick up the most trash possible, we found a little over two hundred twenty-six pounds of trash when we went on an island called Rachel Carson Reserve and picked up the most trash there.
Cute.
Hi. Why should we compost, what are the benefits? Hi, my name is Victoria, I was a fourth grade student at Bogstown Elementary School. Recycling and composting items help the earth by keeping it healthy. Composting items help the earth by fertilizing the plants and soil. Recycling items help the earth by keeping the environment and filling up the landfill.
Hi, my name is Claire, I'm in fourth grade, let me tell you about composting. Composting is when fruits and vegetables decompose into nutrient soil that fertilizes the plants. The benefits that composting gives is our nutritious food for us to eat and to stay healthy.
Hi, my name is Ashley, and I was a fifth grade student. Composting is the process of turning food scraps into nutrient-rich soil. Some of the benefits are that, one, there's less trash in our landfills, and two, it gives us more nutrient-rich soil, leading to better crops for consumption.
Hi, I'm Genevieve, I was a fifth grader. Composting helps our schools because there's more money to, you can compost things like eggshells and fruit. We composted at our school, and I think you should try it, too.
The charts, they keep following, we have a couple line graphs of what we collected from composting as well as recycling, and what we collected around our campus, and we did a couple campus sweeps, and also when we went out to Rachel Carson as well. So before you, that's just what we have collected in the four-month period, and it's mostly just based off the three classrooms that were involved.
Let me explain why plastics and other debris entering our waterways are a problem.
Hi, my name is Maricela, I'm in fourth grade, let me tell you about plastics and other debris entering our waterways. Plastics and other debris entering our waterways is a problem because marine life can mistake it for food or get caught in it.
I agree with Maricela that plastics entering our waterways is a big problem because marine animals can mistake these plastics for food, and then when, when we go out and catch these animals and then eat them for food, we're in a way eating those plastics.
And again, before you, it was just the four months that we had with those classes helping us out with this part, portion of the program.
Guess what happens to plastics over time?
My name's Aurora, plastics over time never goes away and does photodegrade and break down, break down into smaller pieces. When in the ocean, it floats, and most animals eat the plastics and trash in the ocean.
Hi, my name is Jay, I was a fifth grade student of Bogstown Elementary School. Overtime, plastics get eaten by fish or these animals in our oceans, which we eat, and is bad for us and the fish's bodies.
Hi, my name is Hannah Pukin, I was a fifth grade student. Overtime, plastics break down into smaller pieces, and that could affect the plants and animals. When plastics enter our waterways, the fish would eat those plastics, and if we ate those fish, that would affect us.
Hi, I'm Shiloh, and I'm in fifth grade. How do recycling items and composting food scraps help with the environment and their school costs? Recycling items and composting food scraps helps with the environment because decomposers take the compost and take back nutrients and riches out of it, and return it back to soil. Recycling and composting also helps with school costs, too. We pay a trash truck to come and pick up our trash. If we lessen what's in the dumpsters, less trucks, less trips for the trucks, meaning we keep more money.
And this is Mrs. Bass's class, she was a real big proponent of this program this year. On the left, you can see that, taking the recyclables- So, our target goal next year is to take the students who participated in the fourth grade class, the up-and-coming fifth graders, and have them be a mentor to one additional class. We're going to start with the lower grades to get them just into the habit of how to separate and sort. But that's our target for the next one, and just based off our predictions, if every class would have started this, not just on a four-month trial, but if we started it in September, if we counted the months of the school, and we kind of combined November and December into one due to the holidays, but you could see three thousand four hundred fifty-six pounds of plastic would have been not contributed to a landfill, and three thousand two hundred seventy-one pounds of compost that not contributed to a landfill. That would impose another problem of what we would do with that. We'd need an industrial-sized composter, but that's, I guess, a grant for another time. And that's just a kind of a comparison. We'd like to ask the board if you have any questions or comments. We know that you guys have been here a long time, and I know they have as well, but if you have any, we'd be more than happy to hear them.
What's the biggest problem with why we don't have more recyclable plastic areas around eastern North Carolina?
I think it's due to costs. I know that, I think it's China just decided recently that they're stopped taking recyclables from the United States, so that's going to pose a bigger problem on us. But I do know, I think it's North Korea, possibly, I might be mixed up on that, but they're looking at ways now to take diapers, which stay in landfills for one hundred and fifty-plus years or so before they break down, and they're looking to turn that into fuel. So, these are just little habits we're trying to start now, so we're not being as wasteful, I guess.
How long did y'all spend at the Rachel Carson Reserve picking up?
And we shuttled, we had two different groups go out, while one group stayed back at DUML doing activities, we took a group out. We found some pretty interesting things that you guys want to share briefly, real quick, something that you found that was interesting out there?
Probably one of the most interesting things we found was a toothbrush and a mattress. We found a mattress there, too.
Anyone else?
Tire problem, what, you know, like car tires?
One, we found a toilet. We found road signs, and I think most of that came from a storm. Also, a about a five-foot-tall air compressor tank for a wellhouse that we pulled off, and netting that went around a boat for duck hunting. Mostly plastic, though, lots and lots of tiny pieces of plastic.
Other questions?
Okay. Well, we do thank you for your time. I have these cards. If you do have time later in your day or sometime tomorrow or in the near future, if you wouldn't mind filling these out, this will help with DUML and their research. We do appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
They're good. They're really good. Well rehearsed.
Thank you again. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is item 5.2, to consider career and technical education, 2019, 2020, local plan.
That was great.
It was wonderful. Thank you.
I'm Allison Dees, and I'm the director of CTE, and I'm here tonight to share with you Carteret County Public Schools' Career and Technical Education Local Plan that has been approved by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Reflecting on the CTE program, I would like to highlight that our CTE students earned one thousand eight hundred and eight industry-recognized credentials in 2017, 2018. CTE implemented job shadowing program for 10th-grade students to explore their career interests and find their passion. The middle school career development coordinator, Kelly Hall, has established career cafes in all middle schools. Carteret County CTE also has the 2019 North Carolina Pro Start Teacher of the Year, Robin Stafford, who went on to represent North Carolina in Washington, DC at the Pro Start Invitational. Throughout our partnership with Carteret Community College, CTE will expand pathway offerings in certified nurse aid and welding technology. We will continue the teacher externship program that allows CTE teachers to enter the workforce in their curriculum area. This experience allows teachers to become up-to-date with current industry practices. Over the past four years, Carteret County CTE has expanded Project Lead the Way to all high schools and middle schools. We have added biomedical at one high school, health science and Pro Start at all high schools. Carteret County CTE also added a local course option in marine trades that is relevant to our community and our workforce. Stakeholder communication is key to the success of Carteret County CTE. Partnerships are valuable to the success of our students. Currently, Carteret County ranks number one out of the 12 districts in the southeast With success comes improvement. CTE has worked to provide support to school administration by providing each administrator with the current CTE blueprint. We kick off our new school year with an opening meeting to build relationships with our colleagues and receive any CTE updates. Professional development is key to teacher success. CTE teachers attend the North Carolina CTE Summer Conference each year, hosted by North Carolina DPI, to sharpen their skills and build relationships with other CTE teachers across the state. Carteret County CTE has four hundred and eighty student members of CTE student organizations. We are very competitive and currently have several groups attending national competition this summer. North Carolina DPI monitors Carteret County CTE in regards to budget alignment to support the local plan. In the upcoming school year, 2019, 20, Carteret County will continue to offer the opportunity for all students to obtain industry-recognized credentials such as SurfSafe, OSHA, and Microsoft Office Specialist. In closing, I would like to thank the board for all your support of the Carteret County Public Schools' Career and Technical Education Programs. Thank you.
Allison, you mentioned some marine trades. Can you compare what is possible through the current CTE program at our schools to what might be exclusive to the mass program?
Well, we have to do a local course option course that we either can write ourselves or we can take a course from another county. In the marine trades course that we wrote, we wrote it a couple years ago, so this is like our third year using that course that we wrote. My instructor wrote that very pertinent to the Down East community. Not as much, it more is the building for the programs at CCC, so it's more like a seamless transition from a nine-through-twelve to the nine-through-fourteen concept, so that kids who have taken his class can truly seamlessly transition into the marine propulsion courses at CCC.
Through, through the, I guess, the dual enrollment program?
Yes, once they've completed marine trades one and two at East Carteret, then they can then transition as juniors to, and of course, I think now earlier than that, but to the marine propulsion courses that they offer there.
Where are we at with auto mechanics being offered?
We have not offered auto mechanics. I don't even know if we've offered it since I was a teacher.
The college is supposed to be setting that up, I understand.
They have it, yes, they do.
And the students are supposed to be able to sign up for it.
They do, they do. They have dual enrollment, and students that are juniors and seniors can apply to take that. We don't, CTE doesn't really have anything to do with their automotive. We just support the students in that pathway to find that passion and help them get, guide them to that direction.
Ms. Dees, were there any significant changes to the plan this year or notable changes compared to previous plans that might be worth mentioning?
The increase in credentials is a notable, and we still, the state gives us about thirty-five hundred dollars in credential money.
Increase in credentials required for teachers?
No, these are student credentials. But yet, we use a lot of our budget to provide more credentials, so that we can make sure that every kid has the opportunity to earn an industry-recognized credential. So, that would be the most significant, is that we have increased our funding into the credentials for students, and also the teacher externship has been an increase that we have changed. We just implemented it last year, and we will run, we are doing it again this summer. We have two teachers going back into industry. Margo Fulford is going to Friendly Market, and a Carteret County teacher is going to a job site.
Other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Dees.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will consider the local AIG plan, and we have Ms. Heather Foster.
Each year, I do an update to the board on our AIG program, and part of what we do is we highlight some cool things that are happening in the schools, and I didn't want to take that away this year with the presentation of the AIG plan. So, today, we have Tess Hare in here from Broad Creek Middle School. If you want to come up, Tess. And Tess is one of our amazing students. At Broad Creek Middle School this year, they did an interest-based activity, and Tess was a part of a poetry reading, almost like a coffee house poetry reading, and this is a book of poems from the students. And so Tess is here today to read one of the poems that she wrote, and then she's going to share a little bit about her education here at Carteret County.
Hi, my poem is titled "Lioness," and I wrote it a few months ago, and here it is. What does it mean to be brave? Is it being okay with the things that cause pain? Is it standing up for what you believe? Maybe bravery is just being me. I've been told many things. Maybe bravery is not what it seems. Is bravery doing what's right? Or is bravery refusing to fight? What does it require to be brave, like the lioness with her brave ways? Teach me your ways, I'm tired of being afraid. Let my bravery grow a flower I may or may not know. I think I have to find bravery within and do the things I believe in. Maybe bravery is loving me and changing my perspective to accept and deal with the hard things. I will try to be brave, not for she nor he. I will try to be brave, I will try to be brave for me.
Wow, wow.
Thank you. I moved to Carteret County August of last year, and since, until sixth, until seventh grade, I was in the public education system of Alexander County, which is in western North Carolina, about five and a half hours away. I had a wonderful AIG program until I was in fourth grade. I remember in third grade, they'd let me stay inside and do puzzles because I was one of the weird kids who hated recess. I looked forward to that every day, and then I got to fourth grade, and they started moving away from having a central AIG teacher, and they just wanted to incorporate it and blend it in with the normal classes. That didn't last for long. In fifth grade, they got rid of the AIG teacher completely, and I was in normal classes with kids who weren't as, who didn't want to go as, on as fast of a pace as I needed to, and so I was bored. I would get done with my math work in math class, and I would start reading, and my teacher was so frustrated with me. Why are you reading a book in my class? You shouldn't be reading in math. But she didn't understand that I was bored and I was succeeding in her class without having to try at all. And I got to sixth grade, and it just kept getting worse. The class was so easy, and I, I just didn't fit in with the other kids because they didn't seem to care as much, and they just kind of accepted it. Everybody accepted that AIG was gone. They didn't need it anymore. And so, after sixth grade, my mother and I decided to do homeschooling, and it was much better. I taught myself from books, and she helped me, and I got a better education in that one year than I did in the seven years I was in the public education system. And I was teaching myself, and if a seventh grader is teaching herself better than teachers who have gone to college just to do that job, then you know something is wrong. And whenever I moved here, I was, we were encouraged to go to the Carteret County school system because it had amazing reviews, and my mind was blown whenever I went to Open House and I met Dr. Scott, and I met my teachers who just seemed to encourage me. Originally, I was enrolled just in Math 1, but when we got to Open House, we learned about the English 1 Trial Program and Earth and Environmental Science, and my mother fought in the week before school started to get me enrolled in those programs. And we did it, and as soon as I started the three high school classes in eighth grade, I was like, what in the world did I get myself into? But I did it, and it was hard keeping up, but I was challenged, but I did it. My teachers were amazing. They supported me all the way. I never imagined being able to do that in eighth grade. I didn't know it was possible to get such deep education from a public school system. And I recently learned that at my old school system, they cut out Math 1 as well, and they said they were going to implement harder math into the curriculum, but from what I've heard from students, they have basically stuck to the eighth grade curriculum, which isn't really legal in North Carolina. You have to have some alternative. I do my research on these things.
Are you sure you're in eighth grade?
I read so many handbooks. But I just realized that if I hadn't moved here, I don't know where I would be in my education. At the rate I'm at, I'm attending Chromatent next. Um, originally I was enrolled just in Math One, but when we got to Open House, we learned about the English One Trial Program and Earth and Environmental Science. And my mother fought in the week before school started to get me enrolled in those programs. And we did it and as soon as I started the three high school classes in eighth grade, I was like, what in the world did I get myself into? But I did it. And it was hard keeping up, but I was challenged, but I did it. My teachers were amazing, they supported me all the way. I never imagined being able to do that in eighth grade. I didn't know it was possible to get such a deep education from a public school system. And I recently learned that at my old school system, they cut out Math One as well. And they said they were going to implement harder math into the curriculum. But from what I've heard from students, they have basically stuck to the eighth grade curriculum, which isn't really legal in North Carolina. You have to have some alternative. I do my research on these things. I read so many handbooks. But I just realized that if I hadn't moved here, I don't know where I would be in my education. Um, at the rate I'm at, I'm wa- I'm attending Chromatant next year. At the rate I'm at, I'll be completely finished with high school in junior year. I'm doubling up on social studies next year and I'll be in English Two and Math Two and Biology. And if I continue on this rate, I'll be doing dual enrollment almost completely in senior year and doing internships. And that excites me because I don't want to be on a normal rate because I can do so much more than that. I know I can and I'm ready to challenge myself to do all that I can do. That has always been my goal. And I've gotten a taste of that this year and a feel for that and I'm ready to go on. And thank you for helping provide me all these opportunities.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much to Tess for coming tonight. You have to be very brave to come and share your story. Um, and when I met Tess at the beginning of the year and she shared that story with me, it made me proud to have the job that I have. Um, what we do in AIG and what we do in our classrooms to meet the needs of AIG students is important. It's important to the Tasses of the world and we have a thousand of them in our school system. So that leads me into our AIG plan for twenty nineteen, twenty, 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 twenty-two. There we go. So I wanted to start, um, going over Article Nine B, which is what, um, helps dictate the policies for AIG. It says that each local Board of Education shall develop a local plan designated to identify and establish a procedure for providing appropriate educational services to each academically or intellectually gifted student. Each plan shall remain in effect for no more than three years. However, the local board may amend the plan as often as it considers necessary or appropriate. Our three-year cycle is ending at the end of this school year, so this plan would be for the next three years. To start with, the team of people that came together to create this plan had to create a vision that would drive where we went with the plan. This is the vision that we created and it's on page one of the plan. Carteret County Schools strives to create a learning environment in which gifted students are provided a rigorous, engaging curriculum that addresses the unique strengths, talents, and abilities of our learners. Our school system will recognize, cultivate, and value gifted students' unique needs from entrance into school through graduation. We will work to engage and educate all stakeholders on the learning needs of our gifted students in order to ensure they reach their full potential. This vision drove the work that we did. Changes ahead. Uh, what I wanted to do is highlight some of the key changes from the past plan to the current plan that we are asking for your approval of. The first one is increase local professional development, resources and support for classroom teachers of gifted students. What we are asking to have put in place is a year-long cohort-based professional development system for teachers. It, they will be provided with the professional development in a learned, blended learning environment and they'll be given mentorship from AIG specialists. They will learn about the characteristics of gifted kids and how to best meet their needs in the classroom. The next one is a portfolio process for identification. Every single year, I'll get a call from an AIG specialist, very end of the year after those EOG scores come out. And they will say, this child, this child right here, they performed as well as, or better than all of the other kids in the gifted cohort and I have them. But they have testing anxiety, their parents went through a divorce, whatever the circumstance may be, that they didn't do well on this one test on one day. And so the portfolio process is, uh, designed for that child. What it's going to say is how you do all day, every day matters more than how you do on one test one day. And that we can use that information to help support an identification. The AIG Steering Committee, um, will be created and this is going to be a group of people who monitors our plan and our implementation of the plan. You can create a really great plan, but if it's not carried out as intended, it's only a piece of paper. So our intent with the AIG Steering Committee is to make sure that the plan is being carried out as intended, to provide the AIG specialist and myself with information about how we can help facilitate meeting the needs of students in the classroom, what professional development and support is needed in order for this plan to be carried out. We have a process that's required by law called a multi-tiered system of supports. And what it does is it requires screening and the use of data to provide support for students from intervention to enrichment. And we're going to utilize that as part of our screening, referral, identification services. The reality is currently our AIG specialists are one AIG specialist to a hundred and sixty-six kids. We've got to rely on other systems that are put in place in order to support the needs of gifted kids. There are additional pathways for communication between families of gifted students in the AIG department. We're going to create newsletters, we're going to u- utilize apps like Remind Me in order to push out information so that we can ensure that families get it. By law, we need to expand our program K through twelve. Um, and so we will expand our talent development program. Currently, they highlighted it in a couple of schools and we're very excited about the success of it. One of the schools had nineteen percent of their students, um, eligible for AIG services based on our first screener that we did. So we know that we are finding these students who are nurturing their talent and the outcome is that they're able to be entitled to services. So we will expand that to all of the schools. All right, so Standard One focuses on student identification. The first part is screening. How are we going to look for these students? We're going to utilize universal screening data that's already collected in the schools to help identify who has advanced learning needs. Every year in third grade, we use the cognitive abilities test to universally screen. And then we also use EOGs and EOCs. The next piece is referral. Who can refer? Anyone. A student can refer themselves, a parent can refer, a teacher can refer, an AIG specialist refer, can refer, anyone can refer to the gifted identification team. Identification, these are the areas we identify in. We identify students as academically and intellectually gifted, meaning they have academic skills and aptitude. We identify students as intellectually gifted, meaning they hit an aptitude assessment. We identify students as highly gifted, these are students who are at the ninety-eight percentile or higher on an aptitude assessment. We identify them as academically gifted in reading, academically gifted in math, or academically gifted, meaning they're strongly both reading and math. The data that we utilize is the ninety-fifth percentile and then we also require some kind of an artifact that shows that they perform that way on a regular basis. In addition, we're asking to add a portfolio process as we discussed earlier on. The requirements are that we address how we're going to identify students from underrepresented populations. Research shows that if you put in place the following steps, you're more apt to identify underrepresented students. And so these are all built into our plan. Universal screening, a portfolio, increased communication, professional development, and nurturing. So we built all of that into our plan. The AIG Steering Committee and the Coordinator will monitor the data to ensure consistent implementation of the screening, referral, and identification process across the county and it's documented on county paperwork. Standard Two looks at how it is we serve our students. So some of the services that we provide are pull-out, meaning AIG students are pulled with like students in order to receive support. We also utilize something called clustering, where six to eight students with the same area of eligibility are clustered together in a classroom so that their needs can be met. We do push-in services, consultation, acceleration, and we also have to address the social emotional learning needs of gifted students. This is a lot to do when you're one teacher to a hundred and sixty-six kids. So we rely on regular education teachers to provide a lot of the services for our kids. Intentional grouping is utilized during I and E block. We have course choice at our high schools and we utilize cluster-based, um, grouping based on eligibility. Again, we talked about the need for increased communication, so we're going to focus on utilizing newsletters, differentiated, differentiated education plans. This is our plan that will drive the services. We're going to create a PowerPoint upon approval of the plan and that will be shared out to, at administrator meetings, to teachers at beginning of year meetings, but each year it will be reshared out so that people remember the key points of the plan. In addition, it will be on our websites. We have a digital resource database and we're working to expand the resources that are in it. So that if I am a teacher and I utilize a pre-test and a student shows mastery of a concept before it's been taught, I have a resource that I can go to that says, if I'm looking at area improvement, here are some resources that I can use in fourth grade. That will extend the information for those students who already have mastery of it. We're utilizing professional development, articulation meetings, and the gifted identification team to help communicate all of this. For social emotional learning, we're going to utilize a resource by MeHeart, which will help us, um, inform people of the needs of gifted kids and how to meet those needs. We have acceleration opportunities and procedures that are clearly defined in this plan. Those include credit by demonstrated mastery, content acceleration, and grade acceleration. Here are some of the extracurriculars that are offered by AIG specialists and teachers. I'm not going to go through them all, but as you can see, everyone in this county works really hard to ensure that kids' needs are met beyond the school day, which is amazing. All right, Standard Three is differentiated curriculum and instruction. For differentiation, we focus on three key areas. Content, which is the material. Process, which is the teaching strategies. And product, products, which is how the students demonstrate that they learned what they need to learn. Some of the instructional practices that we focus on in this plan are flexible grouping, tier assignments, Socratic seminars, problem-based learning. We also have a lot of great resources that we provide teachers and provide for our students. Um, we utilize the Caro Math, the PDL Project, Jacob's Ladders. There's a lot of resources, Lego Robotics, Vaxels. So depending on their area of strength, there's something that can engage them in critical thinking. We utilize data to determine their needs. Um, our da- talent development program I discussed earlier for grades K through three. And differentiated education plans and newsletters will be used to inform parents of the services that their students are receiving. Standard Four looks at personnel and professional development. Our gifted specialists oversee the implementation of this plan in the building and they also support our teachers in implementing the plan. Everyone that works with children needs to be knowledgeable of the plan and its components. Teachers need more to support, um, students who have, um, been identified with advanced learning needs and so that's where that in-depth professional development plan comes into place. If we're saying most of their services are provided by classroom services, by classroom teachers, then we need to help them know how to serve those students. Um, due to the limited services, um, from specialists, we must work as a team to create resources. Standard Five is partnerships. We have an AIG parent advisory and we've also had some cross-county events which have been really neat. Um, our AIG plan is on the website. We're also going to create a pamphlet for parents and this will be available through registration so that if a parent comes in and registers kids and says, my kid was gifted in another county, they can give them information about our gifted program. We're going to utilize professional development to teach people about the plan and an annual presentation to the Board of Education. The AIG Steering Committee will monitor the implementation. And some of the key partnerships that we've utilized that I want to just name are STEAMEAST, Duke TIP, North Carolina School of Science and Math, CMAS, Duke Marine Lab, and CTE provide a lot of resources for us. So we're grateful for those partnerships. Standard Six is program accountability. Um, the plan requires local board approval, which is why I'm here tonight to ask for approval. It is submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for review and comment. We will utilize feedback to determine professional development and coaching needs throughout the year. The coordinator will moni- uh, monitor the budget of approximately four hundred and forty thousand dollars from state funds and I update that through finance prior to any purchase approval. And I do want to share that ninety-eight percent of our budget, looking at the budget for next year, is allocated to AIG specialists and the costs associated with those positions. Um, we will ensure that AIG student data and needs are visible and communicated consistently. And the coordinator and specialist will monitor training, student growth data, eligibility and demographics, the instruction that's being provided in the classrooms, survey da- um, through survey data, student-to-teacher ratios, dropout data, student enrollments, and acceleration opportunities. All right, so that is all forty-five pages.
Heather, can you explain a little bit more about that, um, how the portfolio would work? That's a brand-new one, right?
Yes.
And, and how many students are you expecting to, additional students do you expect through this process? And is it going to, it, or we, we're still considering, I mean, and taking into account the actual scores, but there's like a little exemption kind of deal?
Yeah, so what it would be, would be, these would be students that we would typically be retesting anyway. And every time we tested a child, just so we know, we're spending money. Um, and generally when we retest, we're finding these kids eligible on another test on another day. So what this process would allow us to do is to do gifted rating scales, which looks at observational information. It would take into account all the data that we do have on the child. There would already have to be data that indicates this. We would acquire at least three work samples, a letter of recommendation from the AIG specialist, and the gifted identification team would be responsible for collecting all of this and then they would send it to a central office team to review and determine. So that way it keeps it from being any concerns with, well, so-and-so knows so-and-so and so it just kind of keeps it all equitable across the county. And we don't expect there to be a lot of students that will be identified through the portfolio, but we do expect it to be students who typically we would have retested and found eligible.
Anyway, so, uh, we're talking a few, a couple, you don't, not sure.
Well, I mean, looking at the numbers that we identify each year, maybe, maybe ten a year at the most, but...
So we're, we're potentially going to increase our AIG percentages even more? Or you're saying this is one that you would, it would be an automatic?
Yeah.
With the retest and you're just kind of avoiding having to take the re- through the retest?
Yeah, exactly. These are children where there is such a preponderance of evidence that it's almost a crime not to provide them with those services and supports. And they really, most of them are being provided support through the talent development program that we have to have in place anyway. So they're being supported, they're just, they don't have the DEP in place.
Okay, and the, I know scores can, um, are pretty objective. I did, um, how, how subjective, um, is the, the portfolio part? And how much, uh, kind of wiggle room is there on that component?
So what it would have to be is the gifted identification team would first have to say, yes, we agree. This kid is a gifted child. And then they would send it to the central office team and the central office team would have to agree, yes, this is a gifted child. So there is some piece that's subjective about it, but because there's those different layers of people who all have to agree there is something really unique about the students' learning needs, it's not going to be that subjective. There's going to have to be some data that comes into play as well.
And, um, my other question is, um, how, um, talk to me about the, um, addressing, uh, needs of AIG high school students. But what do you, what's on the plan?
So we currently provide support through applications to things like North Carolina School of Science and Math, Governor's School, all of those specialty-type programs, as well as applications to college. Um, one of the things that we do want to look at utilizing more at the high school is utilizing seminars for our gifted students. Part of what we run into is mandatory attendance policies. And so students, and at the high school, students don't want to be pulled out of class for a gifted program. So we really have to watch those things, but if we utilize some seminars that can be provided flexibly during lunch, after school, before school, we're hoping to meet larger needs versus one at a time. Um, I do know some, my gifted specialists that work with the high schoolers are working all through the night, all through the summer on applications. And so hopefully it would allow them to address more needs at once.
Thank you. That's, that's what I saw when I taught AIG students at middle school level. They were pulled, pulled out of my class so many times and then they got, they would get behind in the history areas. You know, of course, they could catch up, but it was still difficult sometimes for notes and things because they were getting the reading and, and math attention, but not for science or history.
Yeah, and that's the benefit of the Intervention to Enrichment blocks that are already built into the schedule is that those students can be getting that enrichment and not necessarily have to miss class. A lot of times at the middle school, if they are pulled out during a content, it's because they already showed mastery on a pre-test. So for example, if I have a cluster that I'm getting a pre-test on and I get a one-hundred percent on that pre-test, I might be pulled out to do some kind of an extension project because I already got a one-hundred percent on the test that will be then used as a post-test.
Right, that was, that was the only thing I hated about that because they would do that constantly where they would pull them out at least twice a week and do that.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't do that. We typically utilize our Intervention to Enrichment block.
That is very impressive. I'm very excited about all the annual speaker. Yes, you did excellent job.
She did.
Indeed.
We're proud to serve her.
Okay, um, so let's see here, hold on one second. Okay, thank you.
All right, and do we approve the plan?
I was looking in my executive content, kind of seeing, all right, where is it about the going ahead and doing the motions? Let's go ahead and get a motion here, and for the, and actually for our CTE as well. Again, I was looking at my, uh...
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, looking, and we, we need a motion for both of these individually, do not hear.
Mr. Chair, we want to do two individual ones, right?
Yes, we do. So first...
So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the AIG plan as presented. Join us, Alice, please.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second.
CTE.
Oh, we're doing CTE right now, sorry there.
On those vowels.
Okay, um, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed?
I oppose, sustain.
Okay, all right, then we have, we have three, four, five. Five, four, and one abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, all right. Um, next, let's go ahead and see if we have any motions on the, the local AIG plan.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the local AIG plan as presented by Heather Boston.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye or raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed?
Sustained.
Five pros and one abstained on that one as well. Thank you both very much. Um, next, we have the, we're going to receive policy revision for a second reading by Mr. Blair Protes.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief. We've got one policy in front of you tonight. That's policy 1510427270, school safety. If you recall, I brought that policy back to you in January of this year. This is one of the policies out of one of the updates, and it requires a safety tip line for the secondary grades. We pulled it not to present to you for second read until now, because we were waiting to find out more information from the state about the app that they are developing for us to use with this policy, so it would put us in compliance with this policy. My understanding is, Mr. McKay, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the state superintendent has authorized the purchase of an app. It has not been rolled out yet. We're waiting for information about that so we can start the training process and be in full compliance with the policy. However, I think the legislation that was provided with regards to this policy says that we're supposed to have it prior, the policy in place prior to the next school year. So the reason I bring it for you today is obviously we're not going to have a July board meeting, and so I bring it to you today to go ahead and get the policy out there, and as soon as we get the information about the app, then we'll go forward with the app, but we need to have this policy in place in order to do so. So that's why this is coming before you today. Be happy to answer any questions that I can, excuse me.
Yeah, out of curiosity, would this app be able to be used for other things besides school safety, as far as reporting anonymously of other things?
I am not, yes. I'm getting the nod, yes.
It can do bullying and some of those kind of things, too.
Things like that, too. And I've even had, I've even had questions from certain staff members about the possibility of being able to do anonymous reporting of other issues school-related, and I didn't know if this, this is restricted just to bullying and safety-type issues, but I would love to see the ability to be able to provide some feedback to central services when a staff member might not feel comfortable revealing certain information themselves. So there's, sometimes people fear a little bit for, to report certain items, cause a fear of retribution, how it's going to affect their own job, and so I'm curious, I didn't know if we could think creatively about a way where such, such reports could be done without the fear of retribution. Any ideas?
I don't know if this app goes that far.
I think this app is pretty much student-based.
It was student-oriented, I thought.
Yeah, oriented, I'm not sure that...
Could, could we look into something similar for, uh, uh, um, similar for staff members?
I hear from staff members quite regularly when they have concerns. They seem readily willing to email me or call me. We can look and see if that's not sufficient, but, you know, being the adults, we should be able to rely on confidentiality and those type of things, but we can, I'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? So, um, do I have a motion to approve this revised policy as presented?
Chairman, I will make the motion to put this revised policy as, as noted.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? No, that's six oh, that passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Protes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, next we have, we are going to consider budget revision number eight. This is going to be presented by Ms. Kathy Carswell, our chief financial officer.
Good evening. Policy revision, or budget revision number eight starts with the state. The first line item of that is an appropriation from, for the early-grade reading proficiency devices, an amount of $11,695. The second line item is to reimburse it for our substitutes. The third line item is funds we received for group foster homes into our EC program. Those funds is $5,400. The next item is appropriate funds received for the second semester of MAST, this is for the transportation. The next item is additional funds received for developmental day, $65,110. And the next is appropriate the January, the February interest for technology, $1251. And then the last item is a budget adjustment where we're adjusting between substitutes and salary office professionals in order to help pay for the contract custodial pay. And this is for two different reasons. We've added on West Carteret as contract custodial, and then we've also, the 2% increase for the COLA was not considered when we started the year out this year for the budget. So that's the state budget revision, an amount of $230,707. The federal budget revision, the first line item is to appropriate additional revenue received for the IDA 6B for group home students, an amount of $951.60. The second one is two revisions done in one entry. When we received the, the risk pool funds, we, two of the students had moved away by the time we received the funds. The state did allow us to utilize the funding for one of those students, and the entry is appropriating and moving the funding to the appropriate category. The other is to unallocate or to send back to the state because the student has moved and is no longer with us, and these funds are approved on a student, student basis. So we sent back to the state $54,772.04, and that is because, again, because the student was no longer here when we received the funds. So that is the federal budget revision. The next is a special revenue, and this is to appropriate the technology fees that we've collected, additional funds we've collected this year. The next item is appropriate funds received for recycled technology. And then the last is appropriate funds received for the MAST general fund. That total revision is $27,768.07.
Kathy, since we've had a lot of, to talk about MAST tonight, can you go into a little bit more detail about the transportation, gas, diesel, fuel, $8,500 there?
Transportation, you can submit to the Department of DPI, Department of Public Instruction, to their transportation department for the additional mileage that we incur between taking students from their home school, their high school, into the MAST, and they, they reimburse us. It's not in our initial funding, but they reimburse each semester.
I, I didn't remember seeing anything about that in our, in the recent budget information for MAST, so that's not in the...
It is not.
Not in the budget there.
Because the state's paying for it, and it wasn't really truly an additional expense, then we did not have that in the budget.
Okay. Transportation costs in general for getting students to and from MAST, who bears, they're not in our, our budget for actually MAST itself, who actually pays for that? Are there transportation costs that the other high schools are spending on transportation that are not state-provided funds, but these are actually...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, as far as bus drivers and paying for bus drivers and so forth, is that, this...
That's all state-funded through the state transportation budget.
Okay.
Did we still lose money on the ones that were not, or got dislocated and we had to go pick them up?
We received a grant. It's called Project SERVE, and I don't have the funding on that yet, but I believe it was $130,000 that we received to help pay that transportation for the ones that we were having to contract, and then the extra miles for transportation on the yellow buses.
The, the transportation costs are listed in the budgets of the other high schools as far as operational costs, is that right?
We break the cost down for the salary of the buses by school, yes we do.
Other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the budget revision number eight as presented?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to approve budget revision break as presented by Ms. Kathy Carswell.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next, we are, we will consider resolution approving the resumption of tire purchases from Chadwick Tire Company. It's going to be presented by, not Neil Whitford, but Neil Whitford's office, Philin, thank you very much.
I'm Jane Gordon from Kirkland, Whitford. When Catherine Chadwick was elected to the Board of Education, there had been a pre, Cap, Chadwick Tire was a supplier to the Carteret County Public School System for many years. When Catherine Chadwick was elected to the Board of Education, conflict of interest was identified and those purchases ceased. However, under state law, if the board is inclined to adopt a resolution to approve the resumption of tire purchases from Chadwick Tire, it is permitted to do so because we're in a county where we don't have a municipality with more than 15,000 students, and so long as those purchases remain below $40,000 a year. The proposal for consideration by the board is to approve purchases from Chadwick Tire no greater than the amount of $30,000 within a 12-month period. This would allow the county to resume purchasing tires from a local business, keep money in the county. The pricing would meet state specifications so that there's competitive value being provided. So before you is a resolution to approve that resumption of purchases from Chadwick Tire.
Do, do we need to read the, the items under now therefore be resolved, or are we need to, I don't know if we need to or not, but...
So the resolution would be, Carteret County Public School System is authorized to resume the purchase of tires and related goods and services for school system vehicles from Chadwick Tire Company, subject to the conditions stated below. Prices and specifications for the tires will be according to the then-current statewide term contracts approved by the North Carolina Department of Administration. Pursuant to the statute, the purchase of tires and related goods and services may not exceed $30,000 within a 12-month period. The total amount paid by the school system to Chadwick Tire Company on an annual basis will be specifically noted in the school system's annual auditing financial statements. A statement noting that the school system makes tire purchases from Chadwick Tire Company will be posted on bulletin board in a conspicuous place in the school system's central offices, central services offices, and will show the total purchase amount for the preceding 12 months, and then, and shall be brought up to date at least quarterly. This resolution does not grant an exclusive business arrangement for tire purchases to Chadwick Tire Company. School system administrators are required to apply normal purchasing practices for tires and all other items in ways that are fair and equitable to all concerned and promote the interests of the county's taxpayers. The resolution shall remain in effect for as long as Catherine Chadwick serves as a member of the Carteret County Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I've got a quick question. I know we've done all the due diligence, and we know this is 100% legal, and it, and we are 100% sure it falls under the auspices of all ethical...
Under the statute.
Under the statute, correct.
That's correct. It meets the guidelines of, of state law. Now, Ms. Chadwick can't vote on this particular resolution, of course, because she is, she has a conflict of interest because it's her family's business, but as long as she doesn't vote otherwise, what we have here as presented does meet state law and local policy.
So as long as we stake under that $30,000, and it's open bids, am I not correct on that?
State contract.
State contract, open bids, so are we saying, you know, that we have opened the bids and Chadwick was the lower of the bids, or this?
Well, not exactly. The, the pricing is generally set at the state level, and my understanding is Chadwick Tire meets those prices, but the Board of Education could decide at any given year that it wanted to buy $1 worth of tires from Chadwick Tire, or it could buy up to $30,000 or anywhere in between. There's no requirement of the, pursuant to this resolution that the board, that the public school system do business with Chadwick Tire, which just, it just resumes the ability of the school system to make those purchases from Chadwick Tire with these parameters in place.
Plus, we're keeping it local within our county, that's one thing I see as a plus for that, too.
Well, this is, this is the issue which I have a great deal of interest, as well as a great deal of sympathy for my fellow board members, because as you know, I, too, have a small business that was doing business with our county, Carteret County School, was prior to me being appointed and then voted as a member. And I know Clark does, Travis does, on which our family relies with our livelihood. So wearing my small business owner hat, I understand that the day-to-day work and worry that we all go through in keeping our businesses strong and viable, there's no question we must fight for every dollar every day we want to succeed. This is why I've struggled so mildly with this particular question. Despite my fierce desire to help out a fellow board member, something about the situation doesn't feel right for the same reasons that I sought counsel when I was doing the business, and I ceased those services with this county. I think the feeling that perception is, if you will, is the generous, the genesis behind the rather strict conflict of interest rules governing all elected officials. Our board council, at a cost to the taxpayers, has done a great job in finding and enumerating the exception to the rule, delineating the myriad steps, reporting requirements, and other provisions that would allow the board to approve this waiver and for Chadwick Tire to continue to benefit financially from the contract with the school system. To be sure, if the board approves tonight, I will help educate anyone who questions our decision on why this contract... To be sure, if the board approves tonight, I will help educate anyone who questions our decision on why this contract arguably fits to, into an exception to the conflict of interest rules. And let me be clear, I do not think that financial windfall would anyway be an actual conflict of interest under the rules which govern such a transaction. However, the fact that we as a school has had, had to have spent time, and as a board researching, discussing, debating, and voting on this matter suggests that we have serious concerns that this would create, at a minimum, the appearance of a conflict of interest to the general public that we serve. And in my opinion, if we hear this rule, understanding implicitly all the nuances of the situation, we have even had the slightest trepidation, and there is a very real possibility that the perception, the appearance of impropriety that could result would undermine the public confidence, confidence in the integrity of this board. I know at least two of us, two board members, who are also small business owners, have stopped doing business with the school district, which would have fit into this exception. Based solely on this very concern, and I think it is the wisest and proper course of action for anyone who accepts the voting public's trust and has the responsibility of maintaining the public's confidence in the organization which they serve. Again, all of us understand there's an exception to the rule, and that we have the power to exercise that option legally. But as the age old adage suggests, because we can do something, doesn't mean that we should. And so as much as my fellow, I want my fellow board member to personally enjoy the revenue this contract will generate to our family, and I want to also, um, support with our family businesses all the fundraising opportunities it gave each individual school that we did business with. I must urge all of us to consider how it looks to the general public when they see their elected officials winning contracts with the various organizations, no matter how standard those contracts are that they represent, and to further consider the potential deleterious, deleterious effects that the mere appearance of impropriety would have if we follow through with this or any similar exception to the conflict of interest laws.
So, to be clear, we, and be clear to the, you know, who may not be as familiar with this. The, um, Chadwick Tire has been doing business with, um, with the school system for how long?
Since about two thousand seven, as I understand.
Two thousand seven, alright. And, um, and the, the public viewpoint is the, the main thing you're concerned about?
Absolutely.
Not actually about this, um, contract, um, in, in general?
A matter of fact, um, as soon as I was appointed, I, I knew what their view of conflict of interest being that we owned a business that was making money, even though it was helping the school, many schools, to fundraise with our business. Immediately went to our board council, and he said, again, he advised me, we could do it, but the same way, same manner. However, his words to me is the appearance of impropriety. I said, why yeah? Because I had some of the schools reaching out to me saying, is there any way? And I said, well, let me, you know, let me think about it. Maybe there's a way that I can do a cost basis and I can show that I make no money whatsoever. Just put the cost of the product and you sell it, and council advised me that it's the appearance and that under his best advice to me, that I should not continue business. But that was many years ago, and I feel the same way at this point. Um, I know that there's convenient factors, but I also know that there's alternate tire companies that can provide, can provide the same, um, service. So, um, based on the fact that I think we need to carry this as a board, for the integrity of our board, um, we never want anyone to have that misperception. And again, do I think it's an actual conflict of interest that we sit here and we waive it? No. But it's the appearance of the impropriety that had deferred counsel, and he is a board member, take issue with.
I, when I consulted with, um, Neil quite some time ago, I, I was, I felt assured, um, based, based on all the items that were listed here, but I do understand the perception part. And, and I guess there could be a possibility of raised eyebrows or something, um, uh, but I had still feel, had felt comfortable with the, what we were doing legally. Um, and so I comment, I don't know, I mean-
Yeah, well, I understand where you're coming from, Melissa, and I, I empathize with you, but my biggest concern is if we, we discuss this in depth, Neil, and I never got any kind of red flags from him, you know? And, and I heard you speak when we were discussing this, that you got a whole different feel from him, and that, that sort of, um, threw me for a loop a little bit. Um, because I, you know, I, I don't know how his mindset, or maybe, maybe he just, I mean, maybe I just don't listen well enough, which is a good possibility, but, um, you know, I never got any red flags. And that's why I've not, not really, you know, really been overly concerned about this. But, you know, the fact that you are so overly concerned, you know, I mean, is, is a little disconcerting to me. You know, as far as why, why a legal counsel would take a stance at one point that was so anti the-
When he pulled, um, all of our opinions and called them personally, brought that to his attention, and he, um, um, again, furthered that we'd had that conversation, and yes, at that time, that he did think that was their course action, but that he was asked to look into this matter, and I don't know who had asked him to look into this matter, um, but that he was going forward with this and just taking a pull at that time. So that's, that was our discussion at the time.
Due, due to the email that Ms. Chadwick sent out, bringing it to our attention, to me, made me comfortable with the decision after speaking with Neil. Neil made me assured that it would be worded and it would be legal. And by her bringing it to our attention and not just kind of sitting back, that made me comfortable with the decision. Other than the fact, I, I, and I do understand your, I understand what you're saying about the perception and, um, and, you know, I mean, that's really up to Ms. Chadwick as far as that, but I do appreciate the fact that she brought it to our attention. And di- and didn't kind of, you know, I would have never known that we, that we purchased tires from Chadwick Tire in the, in the beginning, so.
Being that it was an open contract bid, I never saw, and I asked Neil it, he said, there was not a issue as far as state law was concerned, that-
It, it's not an issue of state law. If, if we, if we, as the holders of the conflict of interest, weigh that, but by weighting that, you understand, we're, we're s- we're putting ourselves into a position that I, I consider it, um, possible comprom- um, compromising the integrity of this board. Again, not an actual conflict, just, I think it's good business that, personally, I'm deferring to the original advice and staying away from any impropriety or appearance of impropriety.
You decided, um, after talking to counsel, you decided against, he didn't, that, that was your, was that your decision?
I, I remember him saying this, because I, I had a conversation with my husband, um, because some of those, um, those groups were, um, really knocking it out with, um, fundraising with us at the time. And, um, he said, I remember him saying, I, I wouldn't, I, I just, I would not. It's really probably something you shouldn't do. So I remember, in great respect, you know, again, I could have elected to present it to the board, and I didn't think it was appropriate.
Catherine, although you, um, may need to excuse yourself, I, I think there's still probably an opportunity for, if you want to make any comments or say anything.
Well, uh, my only thing was that we, yeah, I've been doing business with the schools for twelve years, before my children even got in the school system. And, um, the profit or whatever is paid from the tire manufacturer, the school, it's a state contract pricing. And I do it with a lot of municipalities in this county and in Craven County, so, but if they don't, you know, if y'all don't want to do that, that's fine with me.
So, is the contract with the tire company or with, with Chadwick Tire?
Well, there's really no contract, it's a state contract pricing.
So there's a set price, is that correct? There's a set price that we do?
If we buy, if we buy a Michelin bus tire-
Right.
And Chadwick is a Michelin dealer, they have to sell us the tire at the price the state says that tire will be sold at every place in North Carolina.
Right. And the advantage would be that if we needed a tire that day, more than likely, as a local tire dealer, you would be able to receive that-
They wouldn't necessarily stock those tires.
Right, right, right. I understand.
And, and some of the tires may come directly from a distributor to us.
Right.
But Chadwick is, is, is handling that, that process.
Okay.
But this, where, wherever we buy our tires, they're the same price. That's what state contract does for us. The state has already gone through the bidding process.
I think there's no doubt that-
It's not, it's not a legal issue.
If Clark put in the cabinets in one of the schools, they'd probably be the best cabinets the, uh, school district ever, ever made. Um, the school bene- you know, there, there are benefits, but we're talking about waiving our right, our, our, uh, conflict of interest. Well, and, um, that, that's why I take issue. I, I want, I, as I said, I even drafted this because I, I want us all to, um, see small businesses profit. Um, but I think we're in such a unique position as board members that it's, it's very disconcerting.
Matt, are there other, um, well, how many other local, um, options are there? Would there be for tires?
Um, the way I understand it each is, uh, like a bus tire is different than a light truck tire. And so we may have different vendors for those. Chadwick is mainly a, a light truck tire dealer. We, we would buy our bus tires from Snyder or Black's, which are not in county. Um, so, so there are different vendors we have. And the same thing, they go, if, if I'm not mistaken, even down to the size of the tire, whether it's a fifteen or seventeen inch tire, you may or may not have that contract. I know they're pretty broad, but they, they couldn't get that specific with the state's bidding process. Again, if it's, and it could very well be a, a Goodyear tire that we're looking for, and Chadwick may not be a Goodyear dealer. And so we would go, we would find someone that has that tire. So that's, that's, you know-
Do you typically have to go out of county?
We typically, we typically use Chadwick's for our light truck tires.
Right.
And a different vendor for our bus tires.
But if you didn't have, um, if Chadwick did not offer them, what would you have to?
We would perhaps use the same vendor as our bus tires.
Which is out of county?
Mm-hmm.
Black's Tire mostly, isn't it?
Or Snyder.
So that Chadwick is pretty much the local-
Right now, as I understand, they are the local, and that, that, it could be that, that, um, that Wheatley could be a vendor for Uniroil or some other tire. I, I don't know the specifics of that.
Yeah.
But, but obviously they have to have that brand, they have to bid on the brand that they carry, as I understand the rules. And what we put on our vehicles or the tires that actually that Chadwick has, it wasn't, it wasn't, I don't want that to sound backwards.
Right.
And we had this discussion in our, our group meeting before, that, that I had, um, cause for concern about, so it's not a surprise, but-
Your point is, is, is we're not, there's not a legal issue here at all.
Not a legal, I said, is there, and, and-
And it's not a pricing issue. Our tires are the same price no matter where we buy them.
It, it's why the rules inflect, why the statute was written, and what we must do to maintain, um, public appearances.
But then, but the statute was written, but they gave you a small window that was not really in the statute, which is not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. And I personally, as a small business owner, choose not to even worry about it. But I do believe that Catherine has done her due diligence, and it's within those parameters. And again, I, I didn't get any kind of red flag from Neil. I mean, and that, you know, I, I feel like Neil's a straight shooter with us, and in my opinion, he didn't say, whoa, 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 this is, there's a major ethical thing here. I, I didn't get that.
I don't know why, why he didn't, and, and I think that's a conversation we should actually have with him.
Yeah.
Um, because I'm sure he can share prior advice and why he led me to that decision, and, um, there's been some, um, change of heart for him, or he was merely just presenting the evidence as, as, um, he was giving it.
Right.
Further conversation? Um, do I have a motion? Um, the possible motion is I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Now, you have a, um, you have a motion?
I'll say.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Um, the all in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Um, the resolution passes five, the resolution passes five to one.
I think Ms. Ms. Chadwick needs to state-
Oh, am I, I'm, I'm, I'm-
Ms. Chadwick, please state.
State, I'm not voting?
Yes.
I'm not voting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't raise my hand.
Yeah, sorry, for, for one.
Right.
Bye-bye. Okay, um, next, um, we have, we will consider for your appointment to the Carter, um, Community College Board of Trustees.
Mister Chair, I move to appoint Mister Bill Henderson to the Carter County College Board of Trustees.
Mister Chair, I'd like to ask to table tonight's appointment, and I'll tell you why. Um, I ask that we would advertise to the public for a longer period of-
Protocol is you need to get a second or fails for lack of a second.
Can we, okay, um, can we, do we have discussion?
You have to have a second or lack of a second or not?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Was there a second?
There is Catherine's second. So now can be discussion on-
Yeah, now, now can we please have, can we go ahead and?
Sure.
Sorry.
Um, I would like to ask that we advertise to the public for thirty days. Our timeframe that we've been advertising has been, um, back and forth. In two thousand and fifteen, there was like an eight day period. This time, there was a fourteen day period. It has not been consistent. Um, this morning in emailing, um, someone here at Central Office, we currently have no policy in place for such appointment, and I think it would be in our best interest to ask Mister Copes, as well as maybe Mister Whitford and/or, um, to help us establish a policy so that we can set the guidelines to follow in the future. These are four-year appointments, and I just think that it would be probably in our best interest to make sure that we have set guidelines before we appoint anyone further.
So we do not have set guidelines on how we advertise this?
Tell you, maybe have more historical knowledge, but normally we would do a couple of weeks. We do that for our leadership prin- principals, teachers. Normally, oh, you know, we don't run on and on and on.
But we don't have a current policy in place, but-
For any of those, and like for our-
Is it based on policy that you're asking?
Policy and procedure, just so that we maintain a, we maintain the standard guidelines. We're not doing seven days, one time, fourteen, you know what I mean? So that when someone comes up and they say, well, I only had seven days, or I had fourteen, I would just like it to be more fluid.
So to stop the, to stop the nomination process at this point is what you're asking?
Just to table it, to, to table, to maybe advertise for a longer period of time prior to. And I'm in no way, um, discounting, you know, Ms. Darden saying that Mister Henderson is a, is a great choice. Um, but I just think that it would be best if we advertised longer.
And it's thirty days, since we don't meet in July, when would we, when would we take up the next vote on that?
It would be at the August eight, it's the next meeting of the board.
It'd be August.
Is, is there, is there a reason, any particular reason why we, I, I, I mean, I'm trying to see for, for reference for policy uprising. Is there, is there a reason why we don't do, um, like, a, a, a little bit?
We've, we've not had a lack of, of viable candidates. We have great people on that board now, and so our process has worked very well. Um, we have great applicants right now for this, for this particular appointment. We have great people.
We publish the board's call for applications in the same manner we've always, as long as I've been a board member. Um, we did the same process for this particular one, and that included multiple newspaper listings. And even further, this time, we had Facebook Live where someone can, uh, log in and, uh, 24/7, what we did as a board.
How many advertisements did we have this time?
It would have been, it would have run in six papers.
Okay.
Six newspapers, because we did it over, well, about fifteen days.
And I believe we had one applicant who barely missed the deadline.
One applicant missed the deadline.
And I fully understand, sometimes you can reopen the application process if you feel like you haven't received suitable candidates. But this is not the case here. We, we have a suitable candidate that has over, since nineteen ninety-five, um, and has served as, as chair and has historical knowledge of the college. I'm, I'm at a loss for why.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that he's not a suitable candidate, as well as we have another candidate as well. I'm just saying that I think that it would be at our, in our best interest to make sure that we maintain the same practices each time.
I think in fact that we have board members that spoke.
That's, that's fine, that's fine with me. I just want to make sure that we-
We can put that in place, but I'll, if I may, Speaker, Mister Chair, I put much, as, as important as that, as that position is, for me, there's much more importance on those people who teach our kids, and we do that for about two weeks. And that's one of the most important hires that I make as a superintendent, is that person who stands in front of our kids, and we do- And we do very well. In fact, we do extremely well. And we normally do about a two-week period. And that's why this is not out of the ordinary for us, is to say, we'll put it out in our type, because that's about what we do for all of our positions.
And I'm not necessarily saying that it has to be a three-thirty day. I I probably should have thought about that more in depth. But I am asking that it is more fluid, and we do it the same each time. That's it.
Right. And and what we haven't done also is if we had published this for fifteen days and there was, there were no people, we would have extended it. Uh, you know, and again, you do, you do want some representation. Um, and that's why we do that with teachers. If we put out, particularly for special ed or mathematics, sometimes they may have to go more than two weeks. But typically, we go with about a two-week window, and we normally gain enough applicants to to be very successful.
So so here we have an applicant, two applicants on the table. We'd like to give deference to the city Board of Trustees' preference, one of which came to publicly comment, Ms. Melody Gordon, which we all have great respect for. I got a call from Ms. June Respec- June, uh, Vulture, Miss Respect herself, um, endorsing our, one of the current candidates. I see no reason to um prolong this process in in looking for a candidate that was acceptable to the Board of Trustees. It'd be like someone um coming to us, one of us, sitting and having a um wonderful reputation and service to our county and going through the process that we have always done, always. As long as I've sat on this board and prior to that, and then saying at the last minute, um, we're gonna open this up for more candidates candidates when we've got their endorsement sitting there. Mr. Henderson's there. I think um I'd address to recognize Mr. Henderson's contributions to this county and endorse this nomination.
Further disc- further discussion? We, we have a motion and a second. Um, so at this time, um, we need to um vote on one of our candidates we said um we recommended, um.
Mr. Bill Henderson.
Mr. Bill Henderson. Um, uh, can I, all in favor, raise your right hand? Opposed?
Will abstain.
Abstain, abstentions.
Uh, we would need to know.
I'll abstain as well.
That's three abst- uh abstentions. And Jake, what was your vote?
Abstain.
So it's four, four abstentions, so it passes with the two?
No.
It fails?
Yes.
With four abstentions?
Needs to have a majority to pass.
So then we're back to, do you have another nomination?
Do, do we have another nomination? Do we have further discussion of what, um? How do we handle the um, the, the suggestion for um a a tabling or open it up to longer um?
You can retain a motion to have it for to table it to another time.
I'm not, I'm just asking that we put pro- a process of pla- or a policy in place.
And and I'm glad to do that. And this board makes a nomination every year for for that. And I'm, and and so I'm not sure we should hold up this nomination.
That's fine. That's fine.
When we can put that in place and get, and bring it back to you for some discussion, not, you know, because I I think you should read our plan. And this isn't more policy, it would be procedures that we would put in place. And we we would like that, and say, how do you think about that? And go through the process. And you know, with us, because we meet once a month, that's a month or two or three before we actually get it done, I would urge us to do that rather than hold this nomination up from the, from the community college.
Okay.
There's a continual nomination process with that, with that position.
Okay.
Do, do I have another motion on, do I have another motion?
Be what, to put in another plan for longer advertising? Would that be what we'd be saying?
We would put together a, right, we would put together a process for for these appointments, you would like to do it for X number of days. And in these, in these newspapers or whatever process, we would put together some guidelines. It's not complicated, but we would put together some guidelines that you could read over, decide if they're comprehensive enough or too comprehensive. But some way to get the word out where you feel like you're getting viable candidates, if you, you know, that you feel like perhaps you're not getting now. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure of the logic, but but we would put together that type of thing.
So we've moved to to extend the requirements for this position for a longer period of time. Is that what we're saying then?
What I, let let Flair, because this is his legal issue right here.
Oh.
This is a question.
I know Mr. Bottom spoke about teachers, and I just want to clear something up. We don't have a policy in place for how long we post a position. But we have a regulation, ever since I've been here for the last seven years, our practice, and the principals can nod on this, is that we can't, I don't want this position posted for less than five days. We are, we are fortunate in the fact that Carter County Schools gets a lot of high-quality applicants quickly. Um, but I think because of our practice, trying to be fair and equitable to candidates that are out there, we always post our positions for at least five days, at least five days. And that's five business days. So it's not a situation where it's a fifteen-day window, what we used here. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Right.
We don't have a regulation in pro- in place or a procedure in place for this particular one, but for me, when I contact principals every year, every year before the hiring process, I say, your position has to be uh posted for at least five ye- five days, business days, and you must interview at least three individuals. So I just wanted to clear that up.
And so what we would be doing is writing some general outline that we would follow. And it would be the number of days and the, and the places we would post that. And my recommendation is, give us time to do it. We'll put it together, we'll bring it back to the board for some discussion. And my own, my other recommendation is not to hold it this appointment while we get that done.
So we still need, we need another motion?
You're correct.
You would like us to go ahead and put forth the mo- motion?
I think that's a fair thing to do for the community college.
I think so, too. They need to operate with um guidelines.
A full board.
Full board. So, once again, I move to nom- um, to approve the nomination to the Carteret County Community College Board of Trustees, Mr. Bill Henderson.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a, a second? Counsel? I, I, do I provide a second?
Um, yes, you can provide a second.
I'll provide a second, so we'll have a motion. Um, there's a, a, a motion and a second on the floor. And um, so now, all in favor?
I'm in line for discussion.
Uh, do we need, do we need further discussion? All in favor? Uh, do we have, we have to extend the contract, I mean, the, the application process? Do we but have another motion here?
You have to, if, if you've got to, in favor, what are the other four, sir?
The other four? The, 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 the same as before?
Why, why don't we hold the, probably a good idea to to identify everybody's voter lack of votes?
Yeah. Okay.
Um, lack of it.
Jake?
I'm just gonna stay neutral on this one.
Abstain.
Abstain. When is our next appointment to this board? You're saying there's?
Next, next summer. Next, is, is annual.
So it's a year from now, before we get a bit. So we don't have, we don't have time for discussion, right?
We, we just voted a second time. So, help me out, legal counsel.
Well, you've got another nominee. Um, do you need to vote on that nominee? Or, I mean, at this point, you, you're An abstention is not a no vote, but when you don't have a majority in favor of a, of a motion, the motion fails. So that's why that motion failed um twice. Um, without an action by the board to nominate someone to serve on the Board of Trustees, I'm not sure what the community college's policy is, but there wouldn't be I mean, you're just not nominating someone. I mean, you can vote on the other candidate, or yes, you could take another vote, um, but without a different outcome, there's not gonna be a nominee.
But we can still entertain a motion to open up the, um, is that the, is that, is that an option as well?
I think you can, you can entertain a motion to table the question of whether, of who's gonna be nominated to provide an opportunity for additional advertising, if that's what you wanna do, and then come back and vote in August. Although I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what the community college's position on that is, but that certainly would seem to be preferable to not filling the position at all.
And theoretically, if we had a three yays for it, we're still tied. And what happens on that side?
It fails.
So we would vote, vote yea, if you had a third motion.
I like Bill Henderson.
Yeah, let's, let's vote. Let's just, let's do it one more time. Let's do this, yeah.
Thank you, Brittany.
Yes. I move to appoint Bill Henderson to the Carteret Community College Board of Trustees.
Oh, let me make the motion, please.
Oh, go ahead.
Please. I move, I move, so moved. I move to, sorry, I pity over this at this point. I move to nominate Mr. Bill Henderson to the Carteret County College Board of Trustees.
Do we have a motion? Um, do we have a second? Hey, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, um, motion passes. Um, next, we will receive facilities, support operations, um, update from Mr. Matt Bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you got a list earlier of about five projects left, and those are down to the last little bits. Playground equipment has arrived, is is in the process of being installed, and uh so is the camera system. So, um, so the, again, the jobs we had outlined this year, they will be done, and they'll be done probably next week, a little bit ahead of time, which is fantastic. On the hurricane side, um, we are still working with the FEMA mitigation, um, the s- the mitigation side of FEMA. These are the people who are charged with what can we do to prevent loss next time. And for us, with um eight and a half million dollars of loss due to lost electricity, they're looking to, in mitigation, in the fact of what can we do to keep the roofs on better, and what can we do to generate power during those hurricanes that we would, that would run our air conditioners and, um, that would prevent the mold and mildew. So we're in the process of doing that with the mitigation people. Um, we have, uh, consulted with an electrical engineer to decide if generators are feasible, how large they would have to be in every school. And uh, and we will then carry that forward to FEMA to see if that's a, a possibility. Um, we have combined the small jobs, uh, we, we had about a million small jobs, and it was hard to find a million small job people. And so we've actually combined those into maybe a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars worth of work. We're now being able to find contractors who will come in for a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars worth of work. And so we're, we're pooling our jobs, and we have five or six different ones of those going on simultaneously. That has sped up the repair process greatly. Uh, so we have, uh, and we've kind of done those in clusters of the, like the schools in the far west, or the schools in in the Newport area, whatever. So we're trying to speed that up. The greenhouses at the three high schools that were damaged there, uh, they're almost complete. They will be ready by the start of school next year. The weight limit at West Carteret, which was demolished, that will be uh ready uh in July, and uh they do use that all summer. Um, and then the roofs at Croatan and Morehead Middle in the process now, working with engineering to uh to get those done. They're both, uh, should be covered with FEMA, or partially covered with FEMA. Uh, as far as the superintendent's report, um, uh, we do urge, with our schools being out, we do urge all of our drivers to be ve- very careful. Our students are out and about on the streets, and we'd like for them to be, uh, very careful as they drive around our kids. Uh, remind all of our public that our schools are on four ten-hour days during the summer, just to try to save a little bit of electricity by cutting back on the air conditioner use and the lights. And so our schools are closed on Fridays, and they are open Mondays uh through Thursday. And they would have their office hours most likely posted on the doors. Typically, they're gonna be open for the public from eight to four, eight to five, uh, depends on the schools. I do want to thank Jason Van Zant and and his students for coming out today, and the parents who were so patient to wait for that. Um, and Allison and Heather, incredible reports, we appreciate that. Um, and certainly Tess made, made my night. And finally, for the, uh, for the parents who spoke so emotionally and so en- emphatically about Mast and the importance that school is for their kids and for the kids who actually spoke, I appreciate their uh, their support for that school and their love for that school. And uh, and uh, I, I think often it took, I, I'm a pretty persistent person. Um, it took me six years to get a first date with my wife. I am pretty persistent. And uh, I'll be just as persistent with that school to see what, everything we can to make sure that they send it and house fund the school as they should, to make sure that that, that school continues to operate just as it has. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Um, we'll receive comments from board members now.
Well, as much fun as this is, Ben, you know, I'd like to also thank Mr. Van Zant and his students for their letter presentation. And I would like to congratulate our two thousand and nineteen graduates from all of our high schools. Um, that is probably one of my most memorable days, because it feels like the first day of the rest of your life. Um, I'd also like to thank Ms. Dees and Ms. Lawson for their presentation and all that they do. And I would like to say, Mr. Henderson, I have no problems whatsoever. I just, it's more of a policy thing for me or a procedure thing versus um any, any negativity. Um, and as far as the Mast students and families, everyone is, um, this is a, this is a hard job. Sitting up here is the hardest thing I've ever done. And it is not easy, and it's not easy to make friends sitting up here. It never is. And we're all passionate, we're all passionate. Um, everyone out there is passionate, and it, it's not easy, and we don't take the job lightly. I can honestly say, Mr. Bottom sent us an email probably Friday before last, and I haven't slept much. It is, it's a, it's a constant. You know that you have families who are depending on you, um, both at Mast and not, and just as a school system in general, and teachers, and it's just, it's not a job that's taken lightly, and I want everyone to know that. And I appreciate, I appreciate your time.
Uh, I also want to uh say congrats to all the two thousand and nineteen graduates, uh, who graduated this past school year. Uh, recognize the students that were here from Bogstown Elementary with their recyclable program and all. That was a great, uh, presentation. Uh, thank all the guests here who were speaking for Mast. Uh, we completely understand their concerns. Uh, and like I said, we're hoping that, working with the Senate and the House, that something will come, some kind of compromise that will help fund, uh, and help us out there in that situation. Also, Ms. Carswell, we'd like to appreciate your budget report, giving us that update. And for the CTE and AIG programs, their presentations, uh, we appreciate that also. And, uh, of course, with this summer being started now, we got to be on the lookout, uh, safety-wise for, uh, children playing and being out there. Uh, I know with drivers' ed, I, I have to all the time have kids stop car because kids are on their bicycles, not paying attention, and, you know, it's something that's very important. A child's life is out there, and, uh, we have to pay attention to that all the time. So with summer being here, the kids are gonna be out there playing all the time, and we just need to be on the lookout. Uh, and pretty much, I appreciate all the concerns that everybody had. Uh, hopefully, like I said, we'll find that money for Mast.
So to all the parents and community members, and especially the students that came here, uh, supporting Mast, um, Ms. Dee Rosen, uh, I'm in absolute awe of, um, the courage and what Tess read tonight, the poem about bravery. I mean, um, just like Brittany, uh, mentioned, um, some of these emails that we received in a matter of a few days, drafted from apart of these children um, that are making a difference in their lives. So I, I really appreciate that they came in and spoke, because as I, I've, I remember one time briefing the board, and we stood there, and sometimes they had their head down. I had my head down tonight, taking a few notes, that I'm gonna use as ammunition to lobby for this board, just like Mr. Bottoms has said, for the school, that is, um, because I was one of the members that thought we should bring this to fruition. Um, some of the, some of the things tonight that, I'm heart-wrenching, but one, I wanna, uh, thank Mr. Goss, um, despite his loss of his child. That was, um, enormous, uh, personal fortitude to come here tonight and speak on behalf of the, uh, those children to gain. Um, a lot of personal revelations, people revealing things about themselves. And I don't, not even sure if they would have done that tonight. Um, they, they've done that. Um, gentlemen talking about, um, not making it through high school, um, because they wanted us to see how they had this program, what a difference it would make to, for them. Um, so I'll be using all these words, job-ready. Um, so I'll be using all these words, job-ready, one child Savannah, I want to be here, a child that had never been there, Mr., uh, Andrea Cedar, these are our lives, Brian Shelton, stepping stone in life, plans of students that they never would have had. Mr. Uh, Walker, you can always vote him, um. The, the li, the list goes on and on, but again, I want everyone to know, um, I'm trying to fire back, uh, very thoughtful, um, emails back to each person that writes me, and I apologize in advance if because of my businesses and family, um, and, uh, some pending vacations, sorry, I'll be gone for a little bit. Um, I may not be able to respond, but it is, um, gonna be at the forefront of my charge to support this, this school. Um, on to graduations. We have so much going on tonight. I think that what we're not s- speaking about tonight is what a fantastic year this has been. We got through Hurricane Florence. I mean, money setbacks, educational day is taken away from us, emotional, families displaced, and still, our school system and our students have come out and talked. I mean, we have to acknowledge the eff, monumental efforts, this community, of our students, the fact that we stood and had those graduations, um, I, I love it here, I say this all the time, that it, it's the people that were here. One of the neat things, I got to be on that Pro-Tens graduation, and they gave the children a pe, the students, young adults now, a piece of the gym floor. They, they'd done the Oprah Winfrey and stuck it underneath their seats, and told them to reach under, and they grabbed a piece of floor and gave it to them, as a momentum for what they had survived to get through this year. So, again, um, my, my hats off to them, and I wish them best success.
Perfect, thank you, Melissa. Always love coming after Melissa. I would like to thank all of y'all who have sat out here for three hours and fifteen minutes, that's impressive, and I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, what resonates with me is listening to everybody tonight, um, I've got a son who's in the AIG program, but I've also got a daughter who has a learning disability and has, is in a five oh four program. And from one extreme to the other, I've got people standing up here caring about the whole spectrum of everything, and, um, I think I preach this every time I say that, I'm, I'm with y'all, but it, um, it warms my heart to know that y'all are out there doing this for our kids. Because I am empathetic to every one of those parents from one extreme to the other, and I, I understand how much it means to them when y'all are either trying your hardest to make the AIG program better, or trying your hardest to make MAST program so these kids with learning disabilities can come in and flourish, and I, and I truly, truly appreciate that from the bottom of my heart, so thank you.
And I want to echo pretty much what everybody said. Um, um, congratulations to all the graduates, and thank y'all for coming, and it is nine fifteen, so I'm gonna keep it really short. Um, I have been responding back to emails, and, um, I think we're all trying to navigate through the waters of MAST and funding, and lots of hard questions and things we've gotten to deal with, and now we're trying to do the best job we can do, so.
I'd also like to thank, um, Mr. Van Zant and Ms. Dees and Ms. Boston and Tess, um, but I, and, and actually all of our central services staff. Thank you, y'all have a, have a hard job, but I'd especially, and especially after meetings like this, I'd like to thank my fellow board members. Because thi- this, I agree with what Brittany says, this is a tough position to be in. We're ne, we're never gonna make everybody happy. Um, we are, we have to balance a lot of stuff. I mean, we wanna look out for all these kids, everybody who, who is before us, we wanna look out for them. But we have to, and we have to balance, we have to balance needs of, you know, of MAST and this high school and this high, we have to do a whole lot of balancing that, and there's not always a, a black and white solution, and it's always complicated more by, oh, the money situation, you know, and so although we got some flack here and there about funding, funding this and that, I'm like, you know, that, just bear with us, and we, I, I do thank y'all for being patient with us, and the MAST people. First of all, I'd like to apologize, whoever you are, the MAST people, for, for maybe not, y'all not getting the information that, um, that you could have sooner about the possibility. We had no clue what was going on. We're still trying to figure stuff out. We're getting mixed information from the state and from different representatives and everything, and we have to be financially responsible with, um, our taxpayers' money as far as when to go forward, continue with programs and all, and when there's big question marks all over the place, uh, we can't just go willy-nilly, you know, trust, uh, hope, faith, kind of, just ac- ac- accept that there's a possibility that stuff's gonna work out, and, you, you know, we have to try to sometimes just, um, just consider everything. And I hate that money always has to be an issue, but money is an issue often, and that is a big factor, um, in everything we do. And it's not the only factor, there are plenty of other ones, but, um, we'll try to keep y'all more abreast of what's going on, um, you know, and as we go along, and as we get more information from the state. We got, we still have some big decisions to make, um, but thank you for bearing with us, and I really do appreciate everybody coming and, and expressing their heartfelt, um, thoughts and concerns and emotions regarding your kids' well-being, and I, I, you're, you're, you're awesome for doing it, and especially the kids, they're awesome. I can't believe some of them, you know, they were just outstanding, so thank you very much. Um, we are going to now, um, um, move into closed session, I'm gonna need a, a, a motion, but we're gonna consider a confidential student matter pursuant to GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A one. So, um, I, uh, I would like a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, have a motion, second, all in favor?
Who's the second?
Raise your right hand.
Who was the second?
Um.
Me.
Brittany, okay. Um, thank you for coming, we're now going to the closed session.